Good evening and welcome. This is a regular meeting of the Princeton Planning Board on November ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. Pursuant to section thirteen of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the resolution of regularly scheduled meetings of the Planning Board of Princeton for February two thousand and twenty-three through January two thousand and twenty-four. A copy was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on January seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Legal notice on the adoption of said resolution was published in the January thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three edition of the Princeton Packet. Notice of this meeting also has been posted to the municipal website, princetonnj.gov/calender. Notice that all regular and special meetings of the Princeton Planning Board will be held electronically via Zoom, was transmitted to the Princeton Packet and The Times, and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on Tuesday, January seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. During hearings on applications for development, or tonight during the hearing on the proposed community master plan, members of the public will have an opportunity to comment and ask questions. Questions? Oh, let's see, I'm just going to, since that has to do with applicants, et cetera. Those wishing to comment orally should virtually raise your hand by clicking on the reactions or raise hand icon at the bottom of your Zoom screen, or if participating by phone, by pressing star nine. Oral comments will be taken in the order in which hands were raised. We ask with respect that members of the public express your views in three minutes or less. We will have a countdown clock to help speakers keep track of time. Please note that speakers who exceed three minutes will be interrupted. Inappropriate public comment containing obscenity, hate speech, or relating to matters not before the board will be muted. I just want to explain that that part of the opening statement I skipped over relates entirely to applications for development and witnesses, et cetera, and I just didn't feel like, I thought it might actually be confusing to to read that part of the paragraph, so I'm sorry if it seemed catch as catch can. Ms. Phillip, will you please call the roll?
Certainly. Ms. Cappizoli?
Here.
Mr. Chow?
Here.
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Mr. McGowan?
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Here.
Mr. Quinn?
Here.
Ms. Sax?
Here.
Mr. Texarney?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Jack, there you go. Thanks. Yes, sir.
I know.
Adam Keimer. And Mrs. Wilson.
Here.
We have a quorum.
I expect that Nat will be along shortly, and when he is, we'll note that for the record.
No, Nat will not be joining us tonight.
Oh, okay. Thanks. My, my bad. Announcements. Do we have any announcements tonight from board members or staff? I do not have any. I'll have a little bit to say before the hearing starts, but not right now. Okay, are there any subcommit- excuse me?
I said I could give the master plan update if you want. The hearings tonight.
Brilliant. Thank you. We don't have any subcommittee reports, do we, or? Or do we? Yeah, no subcommittee since since last week when we met. Okay, we have minutes from June fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. This was a regular meeting that had been carried from, oh, I guess the minutes were carried from last week. Are there any suggested edits or corrections to the minutes? And if not, would someone like to move them? Moved by Mr. Taylor, seconded by Mr. Cohen. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Hosts are abstaining. Okay. Next up, we have a hearing. This is the two thousand and twenty-three master plan and master plan reexamination report. The agenda notes that formal action is expected. I just want to make clear that formal action will not be taken unless we finish our work. So we are prepared to to carry this, you know, knowing that a lot of people are likely to want to address the board, and there needs to be board deliberation. So for legal reasons, I think we needed to put formal action as expected on here in case we took formal action, in case we take formal action. But it's not required tonight. So with that, I will turn things over to Justin Lesko to set the table, and then after Justin speaks, if any members of the board have any questions at all about what our business is here tonight from a legal perspective, Mr. Mueller will weigh in on that.
And Madam Chair, proof of publication and service are in order, and the board does have jurisdiction.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jerry, do you have to swear me in for this?
Yeah.
Okay.
You raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that testimony about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So it's one or affirmed.
Thank you. And I'm going to share my screen here. And I just have a short presentation, but to begin, for those that don't know, my name is Justin Lesko. I'm the Planning Director with the municipality. At our last meeting, we had about a three-hour presentation. This is not going to be that long. We want to get to the hearing. But I do just want to summarize some things for the folks that might not have been at that meeting, or might not have been following along for the past couple of years. Some of the slides at at the beginning might look familiar, but then I will give a synopsis of the plan towards the end. So first off, you've probably seen this slide before. A master plan in New Jersey is a legal document. It provides guidance for council and the planning board, and it's a vision for and by the community. One thing that I do want to point out is that a municipal master plan must follow the state municipal land use law, the MLUL, and that includes things like what content might be, must be included, and where it must be included. It also determines the process for adopting a master plan and who does it. The only thing that is necessary in terms of process is is that we have a hearing and that the plan is on file ten days before, which we did and we're doing tonight. But everything else we edit that you'll see in a minute because we think it's the right thing to do, and frankly, the Princeton way, so.
And Justin, I think we'll mark any documents submitted to the board as exhibits. This will be exhibit A1. It's a obvious slide presentation. How many slides on there?
It's twenty-four slides.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks. Do you want me to read every, say, slide number two every time, or?
Yeah, probably good. Yeah.
Okay, so this is slide number two. The title is slide number one. So under the municipal land use law, the master plan hearing must be at the planning board. There's no possibility for a referendum or council vote or anything like that. And just generally, the planning board is an appointed body, and the municipal master plan is their responsibility. In fact, preparing a master plan is the first listed power of a planning board in the MLUL. Here's a little background on our nineteen ninety-six, or our current master plan, which really stems from nineteen ninety-six. There were twenty-nine actions over those twenty-seven years, including amendments, re-adopted elements, re-examinations. As I pointed out last time, some parts are still from nineteen ninety-six, while others are from twenty-four years later. And this is slide three, Jerry.
Good. Thank you.
With that kind of timeline, obviously, there are some inconsistencies within elements. You know, our land use plan map is from nineteen ninety-six, but the land use plan, its element itself was most recently revised in two thousand and nine. The goals that you see here were re-adopted in two thousand and five, but they're still reflecting nineteen ninety-six to two thousand and one, and but that all being said, we're not throwing out this plan. This existing plan is actually used as a starting point for our new plan, as was done with the one in nineteen eighty-nine feeding into this one, or the one in nineteen eighty feeding into that eighty-nine one. Here are the different things that went into this plan. As I said, we reviewed our existing master plan as well as documents adopted by the municipality and community partners, things like the Sustainable Princeton Climate Action Plan, the two thousand and seventeen Bike Master Plan, and, you know, Princeton University Campus Plan, all those sorts of things. One thing I forgot to mention last time is we did look at the zoning board's annual reports for the last six years, where they comment on our zoning and what sorts of variances are coming before them, so those inform this plan as well. We also held meetings with our municipal employees, like the land use team, the historic preservation officer, open space manager, engineers, et cetera, as well as the experienced Princeton director, and then, you know, we've had follow-up since then. So as I said last time, some of those folks brought commissioner committee members, others prepared things, so kind of left it up to them how they were going to bring the information under their, in their realm. We also held meetings with boards, commissions, and committee members, or just overall the boards, commissions, and committees of volunteers to the municipal government, as well as community group meetings throughout town, and with the Long Range Facilities Planning Committee of the Board of Ed. To create an economic analysis as part of this plan, we had two economic-focused surveys, one general and one for university and seminary students, as well as thirty-two interviews with stakeholders and thirty-one interviews with merchants. We also held two community visioning, had two community visioning surveys and held two open houses with the second open house in September, which was focused on the themes that you'll see shortly. We added in ten listening sessions throughout town, online and in Spanish. We had a steering committee, steering committee meetings and subcommittee meetings, looking at specific elements. The steering committee, I showed the names last time, it's made of made up of local community members. Some are obvious, like the mayor, the planning board chair, others less obvious to get a diversity of viewpoints and experiences. One thing I do want to point out is that, and I'm going to use the bad D-word now, or at least one of them. There were no developers on the steering committee, or even on this planning board. A lot of times towns will do that, and, you know, there might be valid reasons for it, but we didn't do that here. Additionally, we had that planning board presentation of the plan contents on October nineteenth. That was a little over three hours long with board discussion. And then just additional public input and outreach. It's kind of hard to quantify or track. Different thing like those those meetings, tabling events, flyering. We utilize the municipality's social media, Facebook, Nextdoor, Twitter, Instagram, the newsletter and the website, as well as email lists from community groups. They couldn't have been better to to spread the word out. And on top of that, traditional media, ads and newspapers and articles and op-eds, all those sorts of things, even the radio, as I said last time. We had an engagement hub. I won't go too far into this, but if you want to look at any documents or the timeline, it's still up. So here's just a summary again of the public input that we've received over the past eighteen months of this process.
And we're on slide seven at this point.
Sorry, Jerry, I'm on a roll. And the numbers are in the corner, too. So when I give this, you know, we could, we can compare them to that. So then moving on to the synopsis of the plan on slide eight. Here are key findings of our outreach as detailed in the plan. Residents appreciate a diverse, walkable town with abundant amenities. Princeton needs more housing, especially at lower price points. The natural environment is a treasured asset. Car traffic is a problem. Historic preservation is important and should be easier, and problems are also opportunities. One thing I just want to mention about those last two, or one thing each. The historic preservation one was described, you know, not surprisingly, by a local builder and an in-town architect as, you know, one might expect, but also at the listening sessions by a historian and some residents of historic districts, too. The problems, you know, people in the first community visioning survey said that downtown vitality, better mobility, greater housing diversity and affordability, and increased open space are the things that they are most excited about in Princeton. And this plan seeks to find ways to capitalize on those things while mitigating negative impacts. Moving on to slide nine, if it'll let me. And here's the community's vision. The the vision hasn't been updated since that nineteen ninety-six document, and you could imagine all of the changes, both in town and just in the world since then. Here's the updated community's vision. Princeton will be a vibrant, growing, and welcoming community with a diverse mix of land uses that accommodate a broad variety of needs, housing ample and diverse enough to accommodate all who want to live here, a robust transportation system that deprioritizes cars, ample open space and recreation opportunities, first-class community facilities that serve and protect all stakeholders, a diverse and growing local economy that leverages but is not solely dependent on Princeton University, and an unrivaled quality of life for all residents. So then moving on to slide ten, the vision further states these things that folks said the Princeton of the future will be: livable, beautiful, healthy, and accessible, diverse, inclusive, and equitable, rich in community facilities and services, historic, unique, vibrant, and internationally recognizable, economically strong and adaptable, a global center for educational achievement, sustainable. To the elements that you'll see in this plan here on slide eleven. We're updating seven existing elements from our plan, as well as adding in the first-ever economic development element. And then I'll just point out the two that you see in the orange box. We're not changing because those were both adopted in two thousand and twenty. The housing element is our third-round affordable housing element and fair share plan, and the green building and sustainability element was used to guide all of our new elements as it was created for, and states on the front page of it in two thousand and twenty. So then moving on to the individual elements here on slide twelve, the first one's the land use element, and there are nine goals and sixty-seven recommendations separated into land use, zoning boundaries and regulations, and climate resiliency. This land use element includes our first-ever climate change hazard vulnerability assessment, which is a new requirement from that state MLUL from two thousand and twenty-one. And the land use element informs a community zoning. You know, and every building you see here, frankly, we've made illegal through our zoning. You can't have a duplex in the former township on Jefferson, like the one in the lower left. You'd never be able to subdivide one house to six units like this, you know, great one on Wiggins that you see when you drive up Van Deventer. And you can't have a four-unit townhome on Mercer Street, you know, one of the greatest gateways into Princeton, since it's a borough R-one zone like the one in the lower right. So not only could these not be built today without a lengthy process that they probably wouldn't get approval for, the property owners would have to go through a similar lengthy process to make even small changes, like an addition or a deck. Another thing that I do want to make clear about this plan is there are no upzonings in the plan. The land use map that we include in it is to be used to provide guidance that will take further analysis and the whole public ordinance process. The plan certainly does not recommend allowing four units on lots across the board, as some have interpreted it as. There are jurisdictions that call for upzonings like that, but we didn't find an appetite for it from the community here, and we haven't recommended it in the plan. And like I said, that land use plan map is to to create ordinances or give guidance to those ordinances with strategies to provide homeowners additional choice in what they do with their property, though there's no mandate to do anything with your property at all. One of the other goals is to increase the diversity of housing stock, which will allow for different price points addressing the housing crisis, which we will not be able to build ourselves out of alone, and we don't intend to do that. Additionally, the recommendations are intended to keep Princeton's neighborhoods looking like they do now with options to create ordinances for things like multiple units in existing structures. Again, like you see in that that great house in the middle picture. Rather than a developer just coming in, buying a home, tearing it down, and rebuilding like we see all across town. This approach would also not make a change to the lot outside of just the building's footprint, which saves trees and green space. Other options included in the recommendations are to allow for additional small lots, single-family homes where appropriate, or make changes to the accessory dwelling unit ordinance, things like that. This plan very much aims to green as we grow. And then here on slide thirteen, this is a good image from Opticos Design that represents what, or it's not supposed to represent what's going on in Princeton, but I think it is a good representation of that as well as what we're recommending in the plan. So the housing types on the outside you see here, kind of the white buildings, are what we allow to be developed in Princeton today. On the left end, you see detached, single-family homes, and again, particularly teardowns allowed under our current zoning by right with with rebuilds. And then on the other end, we have larger mid-rise apartment buildings as a result of us having to catch up on our constitutional affordable housing obligations. In the middle, in the orange, though, you see this this concept of missing middle housing, which is about building types. Many of the ones that you see in the middle of this image used to be allowed in Princeton and are no longer allowed in in most of the town as they're either directly prohibited, like townhomes, for example, in many of our residential zones, or they're indirectly prevented by creating barriers like higher parking requirements for duplexes or only allowing three units per building in our only residential zone that otherwise allows apartments. One thing that we noted in the plan is that since two thousand and thirteen, units with four or five or above bedrooms have grown as a percent of our total housing stock, while zero, one, two, and three-bedroom units have all decreased in the percent of our stock, with the highest number decreasing among three bedrooms, which again is evidence of of all those ranches you see that are then torn down into bigger, you know, five-plus-bedroom houses. And it's not surprisingly, housing costs continue to rise in Princeton. So then moving on to slide fourteen, there are recommendations for zoning changes as well in the plan. These will all need further study and discussion and ultimately go through the ordinance process at council. And but many of these recommendations are not to actually change anything, rather make it easier for the folks who live in those properties where the zoning doesn't match the building on it. So these are things like where types of houses are legal on one side of the former imaginary borough township line, but not on the other, like Jefferson that I showed, or if lots were created before zoning and then zoning was put into place where, you know, the the zoning minimum lot sizes were bigger than what's actually out there, as well as updating the standards for some of our educational zones to be more effective and and more modernized. Moving on to slide fifteen, here's the mobility element, and there are sixteen goals with fifty-three recommendations across nine areas. And to the right, you'll see that pyramid, which shows the mobility hierarchy. And what this is about is prioritizing modes of transportation that are more ecologically, economically, and socially sustainable than just single occupancy, gas-powered vehicles that need to be parked. And we're fully aware that this is a lofty goal in our auto-dependent country. A lot of places are doing it. But as with all of the recommendations in this plan, the details are the important part, and those come later, but we need a vision to get us to those details. Furthermore, we go on to mention the street network. Federal highway classifications are required in this plan by state law, and again, it's FHWA with H being highway. So we had to put those in there, but we also added in hybrid classifications from NACTO that reflect an entire community, not just moving cars as fast as possible through a roadway. And then we have an emphasis on different thoroughfare design policies, including incorporating complete and green streets policies into municipal road projects and creating a Vision Zero Action Plan to eliminate traffic deaths and injuries, and generally make roads safer through enforcement and education, but also data collection and roadway design. So again, we want to green as we go and deepave where we can through different modern strategies.
Uh, moving on. Justin, let me, I'm sorry to interrupt your flow. You used the acronym NACTO.
Yes.
I think is. Well, I'm afraid to hazard. I think I know what it means, but could you please? What's the NAACTO stand for?
Sure, it's North American City Transportation Officials, I believe. So the difference there is.
So Justin froze on my screen. Can other people hear?
No, froze on mine, too.
Okay, Justin, we lost you at the difference there is.
Sure, so. So again, North American City Transportation Officials. And it says my internet connection is unstable. We're going to talk about broadband later. And we're going to talk about community facilities, like city hall or municipal building. But the difference is it's city transportation officials rather than highway ones.
Yeah. Thank you.
So moving on to slide sixteen, we have sections on each of the following and recommendations for each as well. And I don't, I don't feel I need to go into this too much, but again, just modernizing it, talking about managing the trucks that come through on Route two oh six, or improvements for bike network and pedestrian facilities, all different things like that. And of course, parking overall and strategies to better manage it. Onto slide seventeen, we have fourteen goals and thirty-two recommendations across six areas, like energy and broadband cell service. Could could use that tonight. In the utility element, our current utility element is from two thousand and five, so it mentions different things. And the utility element is also required to have a municipal stormwater management plan, and we've updated that as well in this plan, because the current one is is also from two thousand and five. Onto slide eighteen, we have the community facilities element. There are ten goals and twenty-one recommendations across five areas, like municipal facilities and public safety and educational facilities. The current community facilities element is from two thousand and six, which is notable because obviously the two towns have merged since then. Under the state law, we're required to list historic sites in the community facilities element, so that's why you might see on this list, one might look a little different than the other. Though we obviously, in a place like Princeton, we've chosen to also have, to continue to have our historic preservation element, where we focus more on historic districts and processes. And just one last thing I'll mention, we did speak with the Board of Education to inform the educational facilities section, and we received the most up-to-date information that we could. Here's slide nineteen, where we combined the conservation element with the open space and recreation one as their significant overlap. There are eighteen goals and fifty-two recommendations across ten areas, like forest conservation and saving our tree canopy, trails and greenways, and flood and stormwater management. And this element meets all of the requirements of the State Green Acres Program, which is used to fund open space acquisition and maintenance. We're actually currently past the deadline. Your open space or our open space and recreation element is supposed to be within ten years to get that funding. We've able, we've been able to kind of tell them we're working on it, but I don't think that's going to continue indefinitely. And also, this element has a plethora of maps within it on topics like wildlife habitat, flood hazard areas, and conceptual trail and greenway opportunities, things like the Emerald Necklace and utilizing the Transco, Transco Pipeline for trails. And here on slide twenty, I swear I'm almost done. Here's the economic development element, which, like I said earlier, is a new element, and we produced a retail economic analysis with a subconsultant to help inform this element. There are eight goals and sixteen recommendations across employment, community, commuting and housing, and commercial districts. And you might be surprised to see that commuting and housing are also mentioned in here. But I think it's pretty important to show that we have, like we see in the picture to the right, about twenty-four thousand workers commuting into Princeton every day. You know, in a town of thirty-one thousand people, and then another eight thousand Princeton residents commuting out. Almost half of those people commuting in come from less than ten miles away, and ninety-five percent come from less than fifty miles away. So the additional transit options and housing options, as described before, could help get more people to live and work in town, thus reducing car traffic and parking issues, pollution and ecological concerns, as well as things like businesses having trouble finding and retaining employees that have to drive in and park. Moving on to twenty-one, again, this is about economic development, and this slide shows average annual wages for several sectors, and how much of that average of that annual wage would be needed to afford the twenty twenty, twenty twenty median home in Princeton of eight hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. A home is considered affordable to a buyer in New Jersey if housing costs consume twenty-eight percent or less of their gross annual wages. Without even considering taxes taken out, none of these sectors meet that criteria of twenty-eight percent or less. And if you take, for example, our top sector, not surprisingly, of educational services, fifty-one percent of all jobs in Princeton are in this sector. At the median annual, the median wage for that of eighty-seven thousand dollars, over ninety percent of a single person's salary would be needed to purchase the median home in Princeton. Even if you had two earners making that median salary, it would be forty-five percent of their combined salary, which is still much higher than that twenty-eight percent criteria. And again, that's at the median home price in two thousand and twenty of eight hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. We know actual listed prices are much higher and rising. And then certainly, last but not least, here on slide twenty-two, we have the historic preservation element. And just so everyone knows, elements are listed in the order they appear in the MLUL, as they generally are with our current plan. The historic preservation element has nine goals and twenty recommendations across a general section, a section on awareness and stewardship, and one on zoning and regulations. There are sections on our existing state and national historic districts, as well as our locally designated historic districts, and there are maps for all of those, as well as discussion, like we said last time, of our certified local government status, which lapsed when the former borough and township merged, and we're in the process of getting it back, which would then allow us additional state funding opportunities. To get it, though, we need to update our historic preservation ordinance in line with the state's requirements, and that's what we follow here. There are also recommendations. Uh, there are also recommendations for things like historic district guidelines, uh, for that that are sorely needed for the 21 existing locally designated districts we have. Uh, and updating our 1981 historic survey and other ways of documenting our truly, uh, unique historic town. Uh, and then there are additional strategies to continue to protect and provide awareness for our historic buildings as well as those that came before us. So here on slide 23 is just a quick rundown of additional sections of the plan, uh, some are required by the municipal land use law, uh, like the reexamination report and and listing our recreation and open space inventory and others are appendices of the outreach that we did for, uh, for this plan and other information. Um, so to that, uh, just once again, I want to say this plan is a series of recommendations and does not change anything overnight or mandate anything. Um, because a planning board can't do that. The governing body, uh, makes the changes. Uh, as has been described before, this plan is the end of the beginning. Um, like we described, we will need an implementation committee, uh, and a process to begin to put things into play. Many towns that are in situations like ours might take two years to update their zoning code through a full process. Uh, for example, and that's just one recommendation in here. Uh, in addition to things like creating a Vision Zero Action Plan, developing historic district guidelines, or forming an open space advisory committee. Um, so in summary, I just, uh, I want to say, uh, the biggest thing that I hope you take away from this plan is that the overall community wanted a balanced plan uh, that respects and improves upon all of the great things that make Princeton the place we live in and love. Uh, and sometimes finding that balance means compromise, uh, for those with strong interests in one area or another. Uh, so with that, I'd like to say, you know, thank you, Princeton. Uh, and I will turn it back to you, Madam Chair, for any questions, uh, or the public comment period.
Thank you, Mr. Lesko. That was, um, really helpful. Um, and, uh, I want to let folks know, well, first I'll invite Mr. Muller. Um, can you just capture, uh, for the board e- exactly what we are here to accomplish, what our legal obligation is, uh, under the municipal land use law when it comes to a public hearing and eventual adoption of master plan? You're on mute.
Sorry. Yeah, um, there has to be a public hearing. It's already started. I mean, this is the beginning of the hearing. Um, am I still on mute? No.
No, you're, you're good.
And then, uh, the the board can ask questions, make comments. Uh, the public's entitled to be heard. I'll swear everybody in. And at the end, whenever that might be, tonight or another session, um, the board will vote on the plan that's before it with whatever amendments if it thinks are appropriate and articulated, but they have to be articulated with specificity because the board would be voting on a plan with amendments, but the the amendments have to be clear. It can't be, you know, let's let's, let's get more open space. I mean, that, you know, that, that's just too ambiguous. Um, so that's really what the board is doing.
Okay. Good, thanks. Um, so I'd like to let folks know we have, um, 165 people in the attendees', um, room. Um, so full house, uh, virtually or otherwise, um, and, um, so I'd like to welcome residents who might not make a habit of attending planning board uh, meetings. We really appreciate your being here and your interest in the community master plan. We'll observe a three-minute timeframe strictly, uh, for public comments, as I mentioned earlier, um, so as to hear from as many folks as possible. Um, that said, a- and I think I said this earlier too, but I'll say it again, we will not rush the hearing or the adoption process. If we do not hear from every member of the public who wishes to speak tonight, um, or have not had time to deliberate to the satisfaction of the board members, will reconvene on November 30th, um, to finish. In the interest of both efficiency and practical considerations, we'll hear public comment um, starting in a couple of minutes, straight through um, until 8:45 or so, so roughly an hour and 10 minutes. Um, and then we'll take 10 minutes or, um, some fairly short, brief, uh, period of time to address questions that have been raised in that time, um, and uh, after we've done that, um, and of course, the board, um, members can pose questions as well, and there can be a board dialogue. Then we'll take an actual break, 10 minutes, probably roughly nine to nine 10, maybe it's 9:05 to 9:15. Um, and then when we reconvene, we'll hear public comments straight through again, three minutes at a time until roughly 10:30, at which time we'll stop to, um, address questions that have been raised, um, discuss, and, um, and we have a hard stop at 11:00 PM. Um, so this is a departure from our usual practice of hearing all public comment and then um, having a board, uh, deliberation, but um, I I'd like to do what we can to address tonight issues or questions that are raised tonight and not ask or expect people to come back in three weeks to hear the boards, you know, to hear staff answer questions or address a concern that was raised that the board wants to wants to talk a little bit about, so. Um, so I'll stop talking now. I- if you wish to address the board, um, now is the time to raise your hand, even if we don't get to you for an hour. So if you're, if you want to speak and haven't raised your hand, please do that virtually. I see lots of folks are beginning to do that. We have probably 20 people so far. Um, we're gonna bring people over in the order in which your hands are raised. Um, and then as Mr. Muller said earlier, he will swear you in, you'll give your name and spell your last name so that we have everything right for the record. Um, and just one more thing, I just want to remind members of the public to to make sure your comments relate to the master plan. Because that is what we are looking at tonight, and we can't consider, um, you know, comments, uh, that have, that do not relate to the master plan that is in front of us. So I would just, I I don't want to have to stop people and say, hey, that, that's not about the master plan. Please, please talk about the master plan, but if I have to, I will. Um, so with that, um, uh, Ms. Philip, if you'd bring over our first two or three, I see Wendy Mager's hand is up, and then Julie Zimmerman. Um, after Ms. Zimmerman is Dozier Hammond, and then Jeffrey Allen. So those will be our first four speakers, and would I'd ask that when you get brought over, you activate your camera. Um, and your, um, and unmute yourself, and then Mr. Muller will swear you in. Hello, Ms. Mager.
Hello.
Hi Wendy, if you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that testimony about to give be the truth?
I do.
Please state your full name, spell your last name.
Wendy Mager, M A G E R.
Do you want addresses, Madam Chair?
Um, maybe just your street, that would be fine, yeah. Terry Hill Road. Great, thank you Wendy, go right ahead. Yep.
Yes, my comments pertain to the conservation, open space, and recreation element. This element of the plan adopts the excellent goal of creating a connected greenway around the outer edge of the municipality. However, the map entitled Trail and Greenway Opportunities omits important lands on the Princeton Ridge east of Route 206 and west of Autumn Hill Reservation on our northern boundary with Montgomery Township. These lands include multiple features elsewhere stated to be worthy of special protection such as forests, wetlands, stream corridors, habitat for species of special concern, and steep slopes. The pink conceptual greenway shown on the map should, I believe, be extended northward to include this area. Secondly, the recommendations in this element are generally quite good. There are a couple I have concerns with. Recommendations 26 and 27 refer to re-establishing an open space advisory committee which should guide an effort to develop criteria to assist the planning board and council in reviewing opportunities to acquire open space and recreation land. There is a list of 16 criteria that may be included. With the possible exception of forestry potential, I think all of these criteria should be considered in connection with potential acquisitions and would not like to see a citizen committee spend much, if any, time trying to prune the list or perhaps create some kind of waiting system. Forestry potential is ambiguous and undefined and raises some concerns that are to be addressed by legislation soon to be introduced as a result of the Forest Stewardship Task Force convened by Senator Smith. It certainly should not mean cutting mature trees, except as necessary to protect human safety, nor the misguided manipulation of forest succession to attempt to turn the forest into a different kind of habitat. Recommendation 45, I simply cannot understand, so I believe it should be reworded so the average person can do so. And finally, um, I do not agree with recommendation 50 as worded. Maintenance and stewardship of already preserved open space is important, and there are many new opportunities for stewardship grants from the federal and state governments and other sources. However, there is an urgent need to preserve land now in the face of development pressures, both to secure the benefits described in the plan and to reach our climate change mitigation goals. We should not lose out on opportunities to protect forests and open space because of a misguided priority given to maintaining that which we already have preserved.
I'm so sorry, Ms. Mager, I need to ask you to wrap up.
I was just gonna say, thank you for your attention and to have you worked hard to produce this draft plan.
Thank you very much.
The next person to speak is Julie Zimmerman. If you could put your camera on, please.
Hi all.
If you could, if you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that testimony about to give be the truth?
Yep, it's all my opinions, so it's true.
Okay, if you could. I'll say your full name and spell your last name, please.
Julie Zimmerman, Z I M M E R M A N. I live at 87 Cedar Lane um, in the Riverside neighborhood. I just want to thank Justin for that presentation and thank everyone for all the work that's gone into this. I did spend some time reading the master plan. I did not get as detailed as Wendy. I don't have numbers. I got maybe through to page like 50 or 60, and then there were more letters and numbers that were beyond me, and I couldn't blow them up big enough, so. I'm sure, Justin, you're gonna be able to address some of these things, because just based on what you said, I may have some misconceptions, so I look forward to that 15-minute window when you'll address those. I just want to say that in principle, I agree with everything in the document. Yeah, it would be great if there was middle income for people, and, you know, you could achieve all these goals, um. But I just have my doubts that it's gonna end up working out that way, and you're gonna end up with something that makes people happy, you know? I, I didn't know I'd be on screen. It's dark outside. If I pivoted here, you could see a huge house that's going up next to me. I mean, huge. So I'm very interested in, you know, I'm screwed. There's nowhere else for people to build McMansions around me, but I'm very interested in what comes out of this to maintain our town going forward. Because even if our goal is to increase the stock of affordable housing, I have my doubts that changing from allowing one to four units is gonna do that. You know, those dwellings resulting dwellings are gonna be expensive anyway. If you, any of those, the ADUs currently that are being built, whatever's built, those aren't affordable. Um, and my impression, and you can tell me it's wrong, is that the current ADU plan, while the goal is to have retirees stay on their property and build an ADU and fund their retirement or make it more affordable for current, I get the impression that it's more teardowns and too expensive units going up. So I just have my doubts that that's even doable to get to that affordable thing, and I'm skeptical. I understand you didn't have developers, that's great. But this thing kind of needs to be torture-tested with developers, because they're gonna think of things that we don't, I know I can't think of. So I'm, I'm I think the upzoning is of a concern to me. That's not a term I'm familiar with. You can tell me what that is. I'm just particularly this sensitive because of that building and everything that's happened in this town of how this plan results in ju- zoning that impacts existing residents. Um, so, you know, people don't really understand the zoning. This huge house next to me, everyone says to me, how did they get that built? I'm like, I don't know, but it adheres to zoning, so that's how they got it built. So the builders are more clever than we are. And I think they're gonna be able to exploit whatever opportunities they're able to see exist under this new, uh, master plan. So that's really my key question, is how zoning and building ordinances will ensure the scre- streetscape of our neighborhoods and have it evolve in an acceptable way. You know, I was taking a walk in Riverside today. There are current homes that are on the bigger side, so there don't make sense for developers to tear down and build two houses, but once they're allowed to build the four on them, they may start salivating. Now, maybe that's not allowable, maybe I'm misinterpreting things, you, you can let me know. But I just feel like there's a big risk, and then there's no zoning for taste. What if they build four things out of container shipments, you know?
Okay. Uh, uh, Ms. Zimmerman, I have to, I have to ask you to, um, have to cut you off.
Okay, alright.
But I, but your point is taken, and when we get to that point, part of the meeting, um, Justin will, will speak to, um,
Can I just add one more thing? Because I think it will be helpful to other people too. If you can just tell me, I'm sure this is not a new issue. Other communities have dealt with this before. What are some creative things that other communities have done? How does ours stack up to theirs? Things like that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next person to speak is, uh, Do- Dozier Hammond. And then Mr. Allen.
Welcome, Mr. Hammond. Go ahead, Mr. Muller.
Dozier Hammond, H A M M O N D.
Do you swear, if you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that the, um, testimony about to give be the truth?
Yes.
And if you can continue with your name, thank you.
Dozier, D O S I E R Hammond, H A M M O N D, Lee Avenue, L E I G H.
Thanks, go right ahead.
Um, thank you to the planning board and staff for all your work and outreach in creating the plan. I'm glad we are having public commentment, and we should have at least one more session for people to weigh in later, uh, after they've heard comments tonight and had more, uh, time to digest the plan. I agree with most of the plan, and thank you all for all of your work on that. I do have some concerns. My main focus is to make Princeton affordable for a substantial number of working-class and middle-class residents. I think Princeton should grow, and that smart and measured growth will have many diverse benefits to the town, but with the current enormous cost of homes and rentals in Princeton and the exodus of the aforementioned groups, we should do everything we can to make a large proportion of new housing affordable primarily to traditional affordable housing residents, but also to the missing middle. This can be done by expanding inclusionary zoning to 25 or perhaps 35 or more percent of new developments going to traditional affordable housing, and perhaps on on 5 to 15% for missing middle, uh, which is 80 to 200% of regional median income for those who don't know that figure. We do need more two and three-bedroom houses in Princeton, and that will help slow down and perhaps even stop housing price increases. But if they are all near the current Princeton market rate, the missing middle will not be able to afford them. And we need to explore, uh, ways to do a Princeton preference for some of the affordable units that go beyond our obligations to more directly help those who have been pushed out. Accessory dwelling, when it should be promoted and supported as a way for homeowners to afford to stay in place. But we should also subsidize some of them further so that they can provide an affordable rent. And we should use multiple, you know, municipal land and other partners' lands, which is donated or substantially subsidized to help with affordable missing middle housing. This includes land that is not in the core development areas, but still would be appropriate for some new housing. I also agree with building height limits being raised, though that should be done in a measured way. And I agree with parking requirements being less, but they should not be done away with, because some people will steam, they need a car. We have to negotiate our transition, um, away from cars. I support the expansion and improvement of municipal transit system and its integration with Princeton University System as well as with New Jersey Transit and others. This, along with bike corridors and walkway improvements, will facilitate mobility with This, along with bike corridors and walkway improvements, will facilitate mobility within Princeton and to and from and through Princeton. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the next person to speak is Jeffrey Allen.
Hello?
Hi, Mr. Allen, we can see you.
Yeah, if you could raise your right hand.
Oh, yes.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give will be the truth?
Yes, I do swear.
Okay, and if you could say your full name and spell your last name.
Uh, my name is Jeffrey Allen, uh, A L L E N.
Thank you.
Um, and I am speaking from Fleetbeat, Princeton, so there might be some, uh, commotion in the background, but I assure you that, uh, I will be able to speak the truth.
Great. Go right ahead.
Okay, I have a statement to make. This is a request that, uh, two historic sites on Cherry Valley Road, uh, would be added to the Princeton updated master plan. Um, as I said before, my name is Jeffrey Allen, and I have been working with Trish Shanley, uh, Christopher Barr, and Kip Cherry on researching two sites located on the twelve sixty-seven Great Road and three eighty-eight Cherry Valley Road. We understand that these two sites should have been on the list of the historical sites eligible for listing, but were omitted by mistake. In two thousand nineteen, uh, Princeton's Historic Preservation Commission passed a resolution stating that, quote, "Every effort should be made to preserve the archaeology and ecology of these two sites," end quote. One is the late woodland Native American site that, from around twelve hundred A.D., uh, confirmed by carbon dating. And other is the nineteenth-century Paul Tulane family estate and tenant farm. Besides their local interests, at the national level, both sites are very significant because of the new information that they reveal on important periods of history. In two thousand five, the state's Historic Preservation Office, under Dorothy Guzzo, uh, issued a memorandum in response to the application to D E P for a freshwater wetlands permit. Ms. Guzzo stated that both sites, quote, "are each individually eligible for listing in the New Jersey Register of Historic Places and the National Register of Historic Places," end quote. The memorandum states that the late woodland site, quote, "contain additional agricultural features," uh, sorry, archaeological features that could aid in the reconstruction of late woodland-period lifeways in an area with few identified Native American archaeological sites," end quote. And noting seven historic figures associated with the agricultural practices, the Tulane site has the, quote, "potential to yield important information regarding the tenant farming in New Jersey from the nineteenth century," end quote. So the lit, late, sorry, so the late woodland site reveals details on transition period when Native Americans, enabled by the lightness and accuracy of the bow and arrow versus the heavy spear used in a hunting group along with other advancements, were able to move into satellite camping areas outside of the Central Village. Tulane not only reveals the information from the Tulane family, but uncovers details on the transition from farming with slave labor to generating significant revenue from businesses of tenant farming. Paul Tulane's parents were wealthy Huguenots fleeing religious persecution who arrived in Cherry Valley in seventeen ninety-five.
Uh, Mr. Allen, I'm sorry, go ahead. In conclusion.
Yes, no, I'm there. Um, in conclusion, we would like to request that the two historic sites be added to Princeton's updated master plan. Sorry to go a bit over time.
Thank you, um, and the clock started a little bit early for you, so, um. Good, if you could give your statement to Mr. Lesko, get it to him by email, maybe. Um, I think one of the things that we'll probably do since we'll you know, almost certainly be going to the, uh, continuing this to the thirtieth is invite Mr. Lesko to sort of report back to the board on the thirtieth with specific recommendations, um, that are responding to um, some of the testimony we get tonight. Uh, so if you could get that to him, unless you already have some, uh, the information that you need, Justin?
Yes, I do. Yes, I do.
Okay, all right, good. Thanks, Mr. Allen.
My pleasure.
The next person to speak is Roger Shatskin, then Don Denny, and then Evan Anders- Anderson.
Okay.
Uh, I'm, oh, yeah, there I am.
Yes, sir, welcome.
If you could raise, yeah, do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give will be the truth?
I do. Roger Shatskin, S H A T Z K I N, Chestnut Street. Um, this is interesting juxtaposition, because I'm gonna talk about historic sites as well. I've been on the Historic Commission since two thousand thirteen, and I served on the Historic Preservation Commission Subcommittee to the Master Plan. Um. I want to also commend Justin and, and the team for the hard work, and especially for the, the public input, which he cited at the beginning of the, the meeting. It's really the most, uh, public input in, in any kind of public policy arena that I've seen since I've been in Princeton for three decades. Um. Specifically, what I want to talk about is the fact that the, the list of specific historic sites uh, included in the current document doesn't really reflect all the priorities of the Historic Preservation Commission. We're not exactly sure how the list came to be. Uh, we're not sure how some proposed sites from the previous master plan, such as a potential Tree Streets Historic District where I live, for disclosure, uh, were not included in the new plan. That's not the only one. Um, finally, we, we would have greatly appreciated having this discussion, you know, prior to tonight. We just did not have the opportunity, and it's something we think we could resolve quickly had we had such a discussion. Um. That's really all, well, let me say that having sites on a proposed list is, it's not just academic. Uh, when a zoning variance is requested in the historic district, we've had the opportunity, the commission's had the opportunity to, uh, advise the zoning board about proposed changes. And, uh, we've done so, done so in a number of instances where it's had an effect. We've had growth and change in a proposed district, and it's also preserved an existing historic, uh, streetscape. Um. So just to conclude, I think we'd like a, a, a shot at a, uh, a list that would be more amenable to the commission. Priorities change. We understand that. Who would have thought that the Academy for the Sacred Heart would be closing down and exposing a very, uh, historic uh, property to whatever, uh, commercial winds are out there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Shatskin.
Okay, the next person to speak will be Don Denny, and then Evan Anderson.
Oh, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So sworn.
Uh, my name is Don Denny, uh, D E N N Y, and I live on Nassau Street. Um, first, I'd like to say there's a lot to liken this revised master plan. For example, the expansion of community facilities, conservation of open space, and mobility programs all deserve credit. Two concerns that I have are whether we've done enough for historic preservation, and whether we are doing too much to promote, uh, development of housing. As always, when trying to craft a policy document to promote specific goals, we need to keep in mind the law of unintended consequences. A former commenter, uh, referred to this as a torture test. We need to ask ourselves what bad things can happen within what we hope is an articulation of good goals. Members of town staff and others have repeatedly said in public fora, including this evening, that the master plan is just a guide and does not change existing ordinances. But isn't that the point? The master plan, once finalized, is both the guide and becomes the justification for future changes in, for example, zoning. We can't trivialize this. The last master plan, as pointed out earlier, was nineteen ninety-six. So we'll probably be living with this, most of the, uh, with, we'll probably be living with most of this new master plan for quite some time. Let's be very sure that what is approved here is what we want and achieves our collective goals. The cost of living in Princeton is a real concern, as reflected in the master plan survey and is a theme in the master plan. Making housing affordable for the missing middle and expanding affordable housing are explicit goals of the master plan for which we are incentivizing private developers. Why do we think that promoting dramatically increased housing density will decrease our cost of living or the cost of housing? There's a tremendous demand for housing in Princeton, and our property values are high, as are our rental costs. In new developments, eighty percent of new units are market rate. Princeton is a desirable address for many reasons. It will take a long time, I believe, for the pent-up demand to live in Princeton to be filled before market prices decrease. In the meantime, the advocacy in the master plan for denser housing throughout town will primarily increase development of market-rate housing to the benefit of the developers, but to no benefit of the town at large. We'll add more, we will add more housing units in larger units, but to what benefit? Why would we want this at the expense of traffic, increased, uh, increased school costs and a more urban environment? Are we overdoing the dramatically increased allowable housing density here? I think this requires further time and input. With regard to historic preservation, the master plan pays too little attention to the importance of historic preservation and is too willing to trade density for the historic character of the town. We've already seen this with the creation of affordable housing overlays that override existing zoning, such as Affordable Housing, uh, Overlay Two, where historic corner properties in the Jugtown Historic District are included in the overlay and may be grossly overdeveloped under the terms of A H two, A H O two ordinance. Historic preservation needs to be strengthened, as recommended, uh, by two of the speakers so far, and also I know.
Danny, can you?
Thank you, by comments, uh, that Clifford's Inc. will be offering shortly, I believe.
Um, thank.
One more, well, thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, the next person to speak will be Evan Anderson, and then Joshua Zinder.
Welcome, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you.
Yeah, uh, yes, do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So sworn or affirm. Please say your full name, spell your last name.
Evan Anderson, A N D E R S O N.
Thank you.
I'm a resident of three zero two John Street and a volunteer board member of Princeton Future.
Thank you, go right ahead.
Thank you. On behalf of Princeton Future, I am pleased to present the views of the organization, which have been informed by residents speaking up at multiple, well-attended, informal public engagement sessions we conducted and documented in the past year and a half. We believe this master plan aligns with the broad consensus of those participated in our listening sessions in welcoming new growth, increasing the supply and diversity of housing, and maintaining a well-defined, walkable town center with world-class cultural and educational institutions and incredible historic and natural places. Princeton is an attractive place to live, work, and visit, which presents a unique set of challenges to these priorities. We also recognize that the township is limited by law, including those surrounding affordable housing. But we can choose how we deal with these facts. We could try to exclude, prevent, and restrict, or we could welcome, celebrate, plan to smartly accommodate, and find a creative fit. We believe this master plan leans in the smart and sustainable growth direction. This is based on the consensus the municipality heard in its own public outreach effort, and it matches with what we heard at our events. Of course, there are areas in this plan where more details could be added. How exactly are we going to turn the plan's suggestions into public policy? What are some key performance indicators? How exactly can we provide housing options that match our contemporary lifestyles and demographics? Can we provide transit and mobility options along with parking and tram, traffic management that serves the needs of residents in the business community? We could go on, but the critical point now is that the document is a strong starting point for implementation. Princeton Future is ready to help engage the public in these implementation efforts. We believe that exactly through public engagement, we can maintain Princeton's attractiveness in essence, while growing as a smart, sustainable, and welcoming commu- welcoming community. Thank you.
Thank you. Take that.
Okay, the next individual is Joshua Zinder, then we have Evan Anderson and Christopher Barr. No, Evan's gone, I'm sorry.
Mr. Zinder.
If you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give will be the truth?
Yes, I do.
So sworn or affirm. Please say your full name, spell your last name.
My name is Joshua Zinder, Z like Zero, I N like Nancy, D like David, E R. I'm an architect, uh, in town. I live on Moore Street. I also own a number of, uh, commercial properties in town as well. First, I'd like to commend everyone who was involved with this plan. Princeton can be a difficult place to find consensus, and this may not be a perfect master plan and address everyone's wishes, but is a significant improvement from where we have been. And clearly considerable thought has been taken to address so many challenging issues we face here in our town. There are clearly so many areas we could discuss, but here are a couple of points. Uh, first, I'm, I am concerned about item number eight in the recommendations under land use. Grandfathering to avoid right-sized, right-sizing zoning is not a path we should be going. We should have appropriately scaled zoning to our neighborhoods that are ideally clarified with form-based zoning codes and historic guidelines where applicable. Grandfathering is more expeditious, but it creates many holes and typically does not reduce variance interpretations required by zoning and planning officials. Fixing the zoning is the way to go. I do believe, uh, that you're missing one element under the economic development section based on the current ordinances, overlays, and plans, and that is the encouragement of Witherspoon Street as a secondary commercial corridor within town. Uh, in the recommendations, item twelve, uh, discusses strengthening Nassau Street, and item thirteen refers to Alexander Street, uh, both of which are appropriate. I'm guessing that the Alexander Street is also part of the university's vision. Um. But it should mention the controlled go, growth, controlled growth of Witherspoon Street as a commercial corridor um, as a recommendation as well. Witherspoon Street seems to have been left off of these recommendations. Uh, next, I'm, I'm glad to see that signage and expansion of potential usage and historic guidelines have been included throughout the report in recommendations. I think that's a great first step. Um. I was skeptical of the plan over the last months, year, uh, because of certainly of all the hot rumors going around, and I was concerned from a number of public events that I had attended. But I think everyone involved should be applauded for this document in front of us. It is a marked improvement, and everybody should be commended. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Zinder. Appreciate that.
Okay. The next individual is Christopher Barr, and then I have A.J. Stuart Smith, and then Aubrey Haynes.
Christopher Barr, last name is spelled B A R R.
Yeah, do you swear or affirm the testimony about, about to give will be the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Well, first off, I want to thank Justin and all members of the planning board for the considerable thought that you've clearly put into the, uh, development of the new master plan. Uh, we truly appreciate it. Um, I just want to make a, a brief statement to supplement, um, the statement that was made earlier about the importance of including the two historic sites, um, uh, up at, um, the Great Road and Cherry Valley Road at the northern gateway to Princeton. Um, I'm the executive director of Ridgeview Conservancy, and our organization, uh, worked for several years with the DNR Greenway and, uh, local property owners to, um, purchase, uh, one property of four and a half acres and to work with the property owner to purchase a conservation easement of the second property at twelve sixty-seven Great Road, um, uh, where we established a conservation easement of eight point seven acres in order to protect these historic sites, and so we would very much like to see that they're included on the master plan. I won't go into a lot of detail, because I think Jeffrey summarized that well, except to say that, um, the histories on these sites are really, um, incredible, and I think very important as part of, uh, the history of Princeton. And they're important for a couple of reasons, especially in that they, um, uh, they are representative of underrepresented, uh, history. Uh, they are representative of underrepresented, uh, history in Princeton. Late Woodland Indian site. To my knowledge is one of the very few documented Native American sites within the, uh, municipal boundaries. Um, and then the Tulane Farmstead, uh, which is situated right there as well. Um, is significant both because of the, of Tulane's role in, in and around Princeton. But also there's important African-American history associated with the Tulane Farmstead. Uh, there is a, a former enslaved, uh, woman named Sylvia Dubois. Who, uh, was a, um, she lived to be a hundred twenty years old. She was a. Very significant figure in the history of African-Americans in the Hopewell Valley and the Sowerland regions. And this is one site with which she's associated within Princeton. She worked for the Tulane family. Um, she's a figure of national significance and she's largely been forgotten in Princeton and, um. So part of wanting to preserve these sites is really to. You know, celebrate and preserve and understand, uh, the history of un- underrepresented, uh, people in our community. Uh, so thank you very much and I'll stop my comments there.
Thank you, Mr. Barr.
Okay, the next person is A J Smith, A J Stewart Smith, and then Aubrey Haynes.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, could you raise your right hand?
All right, I, I won't, I'm not a native, but I've lived here.
If, if, if you could.
Mr. Smith, Mr. Smith, we need to swear you in, so Mr. Mueller is gonna do that.
He can raise your right hand. Do you swear?
Tell the truth.
Okay, um, so, thank you.
I, I, I live on four over the road. The S M I T H, I think that's easy to spell. So. I, I read the report just recently and, and I was really on the whole very impressed with it and I think Mr. Lesko and others. Were what's basically fine, but there are these questions that keep coming up. On a little street like ours, which by the way, has had. Many famous architects, including Ralph Bauhan's house, his own house. Which somehow was allowed to be torn down, not historic. This guy built. Some of the most famous houses in Princeton, and this is where he lived. So I'm very worried about the, the, to make sure that people are sensitive in, uh, allowing, uh. Big changes in, in, uh, what was other, it was a. Classic house in our little neighborhood. And another thing of, so if I just understand the zoning. On the map. In principle, that would mean on our little one-block street. That there could be nothing but. There, 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 there could be. Uh, about a quadrupling in the number of houses on our street and. So you say that this, though, this, there's no formal zoning and blah, blah, blah. But as I can understand it, when I look at our neighborhood. And what, what, and then the, the caption, it says two to eight houses per acre. On a one-block street that has. Nothing, nothing like that. And, and. So I, I, I just want to be, uh, understand what this really means. Is it, is it? Conceivable seems it should be out of the question that in, in. A neighborhood, not just like ours, Prince, one of the things that makes Princeton unique is all the neighborhood, the neighborhoods have their own character. And so thi- this, this zoning up like this would seem to destroy them. And by the way, just let me. Comment, there is also a thing about. Proposed things and there in the appendix, it showed two retirement assisted living things. One of them was on the property of the director of the institute. So I would suggest that that is not a viable, it's, I hope that's not a viable option. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Smith. Um, and, um, for you and, and others who might wonder, I'm sure that when we reach our, our stopping point in our discussion slash. Explanation point, we will. Um, ask Mr. Lesko and, and perhaps, uh, Mr. Sullivan as well to address questions related to density and the misunderstandings about what. Um, the recommendation would lead to in, in, in terms of single. Family homes and teardowns and multiple.
Cause if, if you just took it literally.
I don't want you to keep going.
Triple the population of Princeton.
Just telling you, telling you what we'll, what we'll address.
We don't want to see Princeton's times as big.
Thank you, yeah. Who's up next, Carrie?
Uh, the next person is Mr. Aubrey Haynes, and then we have Alex Randall.
Hi, Mr. Haynes, welcome.
Hello, good evening, everyone. My name is Aubrey Haynes.
If you could raise your.
I have to swear in first.
Yep, you swear or affirm the testimony about to give will be the truth?
I affirm.
Okay, and if you could state your full name and spell your last name.
Aubrey Haynes, H A I N E S.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. My, my name is Aubrey Haynes. I'm president of Experienced Princeton, the town's special improvement district. I've been asked by the board of Experienced Princeton to speak to you tonight. Experienced Princeton looks forward to a promising future for the town of Princeton. The master plan is the product of years of studying the town, listening to stakeholders and translating the many great ideas into a document. That points the direction towards future land use in the town. As a guide to leadership, the plan paints a bright future where generations of people who live, work and play here. Will continue to enjoy what has been so great about the town while showing a path to solving some of the town's most glaring problems. Affordable housing is hurting the town. Almost everyone that works here lives somewhere else. Their commute is expensive and time-consuming and bad for the environment. The master plan provides significant opportunities to address this critical issue. Parking has been a perennial problem and recent efforts have not yielded results. Experienced Princeton is partnering with the town to help solve this issue so that visitors, residents and workers have easier access to parking. Again, the master plan addresses this and we continue to encourage solutions. Finally, public transportation is an important solution to many problems. It will help the economy of the town and take pressure off parking. We know this will take time, but having a plan to enable this critical element is key. The master plan provides that path forward to a much more sustainable future. We're not alone in the struggle to deal with these issues. I just returned from the Urban Land Institute Conference in Los Angeles last week. People all over the U S are struggling to address housing, parking and public transportation. Many of the solutions that have worked successfully to other similar communities have, uh, are included in the master plan. Finally, we met with U S Senator Cory Booker and local Senator Andrew Zwickler in August. They asked, uh, the businesses what issues are facing, uh, that people are facing and what they could do to help. Again, affordable housing and public transportation were the key issues raised. And they provided, they, they pledged to provide support, both state and federal funding. So I believe the master plan and any ordinances that flow from it will be matched with action. With funding and with a plan that anticipates those solutions, we can address many of these issues. We look forward to working with the town to solve these problems. This will not happen overnight. But with a sustained effort, I'm confident that we can make Princeton even better than it already is. The master plan is a big step towards a brighter future for Princeton. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Haynes.
Okay, the next person to speak is Alex Randall, and then we have Matt Mel, Mel Seco.
Lesko. Go ahead, Mr. Mueller.
Is he here?
Yes, he is.
Oh, yes, you can raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony, testimony about to give will be the truth?
So swear. My name's Alex Randall, last name R A N D A L L. Uh, I'm a retired professor at the university, it's not this one, and I live on Queenston Place around the corner from Jug Town. Um, I'm, want, wish to talk tonight about this notion of affordability. Um, I've worked for the last twenty years in a place that was one of the poorest in America, and I would take any of those people as my next door neighbor. So I'm in favor of affordable housing and I have no reservations about who the people are who we call affordable, uh, house denizens. It's fine with me. My problem is with affordability moving. The whole concept of what's affordable. The house I live right in the moment here in Princeton was an affordable house when it was built. It would not be affordable to a lot of people who we're now talking about making affordable housing for. No matter how affordable you make it, the demand for housing in Princeton will drive the price of those properties. Astronomical and the idea that we should have affordable housing so that the police officer, a teacher, or somebody who works in the downtown store. Can afford to live in town is an illusion. No matter what you build, it's going to become expensive. Over time, and this affordability notion is a slippery slope. We cannot assume that today's affordability will continue to be affordable in the future. Uh, every time I drive into town, I come down from, uh, uh, up north of here every couple of days and as I drive in, particularly as I get to. Uh, the edges of, of, uh, the village. I, I'm struck again and again with how utterly beautiful this town is. It's spectacularly beautiful place. Uh, in the village as well as in the outlying areas of the village. And it seems mindless to me to. Throw away the natural beauty of the colonial architecture. I'm speaking specifically about trying to build four-story buildings in what we call Jug Town. It's crazy. I don't care how affordable you make the housing, jamming those buildings into that neighborhood is insane. It's too crowded already, and when you start to add buildings behind it that are taller as the one that was just proposed a few weeks ago. Uh, it, it, the, the streetscape will be destroyed. Meanwhile, we have large open tracts of land. That could be developed with multiple-story housing and not destroy the aesthetic of the village at all. I know particularly Butler Track. Uh, I, I don't know what's going to be done with the Westminster Choir College, but these are places where things could be built. That were more affordable without destroying the aesthetic of the village. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Randall.
Okay, the next person is Matt.
Matt Melzko, can you turn your camera on? There you go, and unmute yourself.
And then Maggie Schuler.
Evening.
If you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give will be the truth?
I do.
Could you please state your full name, spell your last name?
Yeah, Matt Melczko, M L E C Z K O.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have a statement, um, that, that I'll read. Good evening, everyone. My name is Matt Melczko. I'm a Princeton University PhD candidate studying housing policy among other topics and I'm. Speaking tonight on behalf of Princeton Grows, a brand new organization that strives to promote a welcoming, diverse. And cohesive Princeton community made of neighbors that prioritize abundant, dignified, sustainable and affordable housing for all. We formed to bring about the necessary policy changes to improve housing affordability and stability. In response to the clear and consistent public support for this voice and demonstrated over the course of many well-attended public meetings. And discussions over the past few years. We'd like to express our support for this proposed master plan and thank all who took part in its development. The results of the community surveys that informed this plan may clear that the cost of living and in particular, the cost of housing. Is the most significant issue facing most Princeton residents. This finding is consistent with the steep and rising housing costs facing most Princeton residents and our profound lack of low and middle income housing. The proposed, uh, mass, this proposed master plan rightly acknowledges that Princeton will continue to grow. And that the socially and environmentally responsible way to respond is to accommodate this growth with sensible zoning and land use reforms. It rightly recommends harmonizing and simplifying the borough and township zoning ordinances along with the removal of barriers. To developing a more affordable and environmentally sustainable housing stock. Barriers like minimum parking requirements, minimum lot sizes, strict Florida area ratios and low-density building height restrictions. Empirical evidence has confirmed that barriers like these limit housing opportunities and drive up housing costs. But also that a range of municipalities across the country, including small towns like Flemington, New Jersey. Have successfully relaxed or removed some of these barriers and are starting to see positive results. These are sensible and long overdue reforms and public outreach has revealed that many in the Princeton community support them. The recommended zoning and land use reforms in this plan will legalize and incentivize a greater diversity of housing units that will add to our housing supply. Help contain housing costs, but also lower carbon emissions by producing smaller housing units. Which require less energy and make walking, biking and public transit more viable. As the proposed master plan repeatedly points out, these proposed reforms will also enable us to direct development towards already developed. Areas of the municipality that are currently underutilized and away from environmentally sensitive areas. To that end, we also encourage the development of multifamily housing on parcels identified throughout this proposed plan. Parcels like the Butler Track, Lower Alexander and others like them, particularly surface parking lots like the one on Park Place. This master plan won't solve all of our problems. Much more will be required to systematically address the set of housing issues that we face. But it's a step in the right direction at a time when we really need action. This proposed master plan is a positive vision for Princeton that we embrace. It provides a framework for reform and a roadmap for all stakeholders. Residents, developers, community institutions and local leaders to do our part. Princeton grows supports this vision, encourage its, its adoption. And looks forward to working with these stakeholders to bring it to fruition. And I encourage anyone interested in joining in this effort to visit princetongrowes.com to learn more. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Melch Co, and I'm sorry I mispronounced your name earlier.
No.
I was proud. I thought I was getting it and I did not.
And I enjoyed it twice. Uh, the next person to speak is Maggie Schuler, then we have George, and then we have Pallavi Nuka.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Margaret Deppenbrock, um, my legal name, D E P E N. B as in boy, R O C K. I live on Nassau Street in the Jug Town area. And a homeowner, which one, sorry.
If you could raise your right hand, I'm gonna sway in.
Yep.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give will be the truth?
I do.
Last one affirmed.
Thanks. I've read the master plan with a particular focus on land use and historic preservation. I've also read a myriad of opinion pieces in local publications discussing the plan. One of those pieces recently suggested that many of the concerns raised by residents are too alarmist in nature. That we should just calm down and that the changes set forth in the master plan may not even be large enough to notice. While to the planning board, Borough Council, and my apologies to Taylor Swift, I simply can't calm down. I can't calm down because it was the planning board and the same external planners utilized to create this master plan proposal. That included in the depths of COVID, five historic buildings in the Jug Town District to be included in the A H O two overlay. Allowing for forty-five foot high buildings with zero setback requirements at the treacherous intersection of Harrison and Nassau. So you'll understand my skepticism and the historic preservation has been thoroughly considered in this proposal. Within the land use goals on page nineteen, it is only even mentioned tangentially. Under the third land use goal focused on removing boundaries to increase density. Where is the mandate to preserve and protect our historic sites and ensure any development? In these neighborhoods follows local and federal guidelines and is compatible in scale and form. Why is this not important enough to include as this is distinct land use goal? Instead, I interpret many of our current historic districts now to be included in what page forty-seven titles downtown districts. Where proposals call for elimination of minimum yard requirements. Elimination of minimum lot area requirements tied to the number of dwellings. Reduction or elimination entirely of off-street parking requirements. In neighborhoods where no or very limited street parking even exists. And the allowable inclusion of penthouses above the maximum permitted building heights. How do these recommendations reconcile with the definition included on page thirty-six of the missing middle? Describing these structures as house-scale buildings compatible in scale and form with detached single-family homes. I can't calm down because I have three school-aged children and their classmates. Who are already facing significant increased enrollment even prior to the additional shopping center housing being done. With no concrete plan on how to address it. The master plan includes no enrollment impact analysis. I can't calm down because I'm a taxpayer in this municipality. My taxes have more than doubled in my twenty years of owning a home here while services in that same period have diminished. How will we pay for the new schools? How will the emerg- emergency services and other infrastructure requirements be paid for? We are told that zoning is not changing overnight. But residents need to understand that it is this document to which future zoning ordinance and variances will be guided by. I also raise issue with the timing of this public hearing coinciding with school break. With many families traveling over this long weekend preventing their participation. At a minimum, more.
Ma'am, I need to ask you to wrap up, please.
Um, I am, at a minimum, more time is needed for the community to assess the impact of the massive changes being proposed. And analysis on their downstream impact. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, the next person is George, but it does not look like a George to me.
I'm not George, I'm sorry. I'm using my husband's laptop and we forgot to change the label, sorry.
Okay, well, before you go, before you continue, I want to announce the next two individuals will be Pallavi Nuka and Kathy Knight. So can you please give us your name, ma'am?
Janet Stern.
And I'm gonna swear. If you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So sworn or affirmed.
Um, first, I have a question for Mr. Lesko, maybe he can answer that later. When I was at the last open house that was at the community building, um, the Witherspoon Street building. Um, I was told by one of the consultants. um, I was told by one of the consultants that the Community Forestry Management Plan would be an appendix to this master plan, but I don't see it in the list of appendices, so maybe he can answer that later.
Um. We'll address it later. Yes, thanks.
Okay, thank you. I was very glad to see that the master plan reflects the public's concern about trees and urban canopy that has been expressed throughout the public input, all of the sessions. In the master plan, the importance of protecting and maintaining healthy, mature trees and the urban canopy is mentioned in relation to climate resiliency, wildlife habitat fragmentation, storm water control, wildfire, solar heat, temperatures, environmental justice, and the need for zoning requirements and public improvements to avoid encroachments caused by new development. And in that vein, the master plan also advises amending zoning code and tree removal and replacement plan plans to ensure that the tree canopy continues to grow. Those were the words. But in fact, it's not continuing to grow. In two thousand sixteen, Princeton's canopy was fifty-three point eighty-nine percent, but that was from the National Land Cover database. Impervious surface was eight point seventy-four percent. At the last Reliable Canopy Survey, which was probably around two thousand nineteen, but published in by iTree in in this year, the canopy was only thirty-seven point seventy-nine percent. That's a decrease of sixteen percent in just a few years. Impervious surface was twenty-four point seventy-three percent. Removals continue to outplace plantings by about two to one. Uh. And that's, of course, and it, and not to mention the the infestations, like the, uh, the ashbore, the infectious diseases that trees suffer, destruction from storms and development. So we're really having a losing battle here. The remedy of tree removal and replacement is desirable, but it is not the sole answer, and this is mentioned in in the master plan. The saplings that we usually plant have a survival rate of only fifty percent in the first five years, and then a half-life of ten to fifteen years. So the greatest benefit to Princeton to maintain and protect is to maintain and protect our mature trees that perform all the services and provide all the benefits that we now know makes them the municipality's single best weapon against climate crises. And this doesn't apply only to forests. Um, in the master plan, it says on page fifty-four, the land use plan anticipates new development to occur in areas that are already developed and currently have little or no forest cover. And that's what worries me. What will happen in these developed neighborhoods where density is going to be so much higher? What will happen there when all?
Thank you, Ms.
Provide are going to really be critical.
Yes. And and we will, we will um uh, uh, address uh what you've said uh during the, when we, when we uh, break at at uh eight forty-five, about ten minutes from now.
Thank you.
I'm sorry to cut you off, but you've said what, yeah. Got, we got your point. Thank you. Ms. Knight?
I'm sorry, we do have someone before you.
Oh, so of course.
Palavi Nuka.
Yeah, if you maybe turn your camera off, Ms. Knight, and we'll take um Palavi Nuka.
Palavi Nuka.
Hi, uh, my name is Palavi Nuka.
If you could raise your right hand. You swear or affirm the testimony about to give me the truth?
Yes.
So sworn or affirmed, could you please say your full name and spell your last name?
Palavi Nuka, N U K A.
Okay, thank you.
Um, first of all, I want to just congratulate uh Justin Lesko and the rest of the Master Plan Committee on producing um, a really comprehensive and detailed master plan, which, as we're hearing through these public comments, certainly is grappling with many of the challenges facing Princeton as it grows and develops. I am a resident of sixty-six Lee Brook Lane. Um, I'm a parent of three children in public schools. Obviously, I'm a taxpayer as well. Um, and I'm on the board of the Friends of Heron Town Woods, uh, which looks after uh the Heron Town Woods area in the northeast part of Princeton. Um, I appreciate the plan's uh integration of conservation, open space, and recreational goals. Um, I think this is a vast improvement over the previous plan. Um, and I think it really is forward-looking in that it recognizes how people in town are interacting with open spaces and um the conservation areas. I also appreciate that the plan advocates advocates for concentrating economic and residential activity in the downtown areas and um, setting up multiple nodes of economic activity. Um, I think that's an excellent way to continue to conserve the areas that are outside of the center and maintain those as um parks and open spaces that allow the community to breathe. Um, I, I also want to point out that um it is challenging to balance um conservation goals, historic preservation goals, and goals of increasing and providing affordable housing. Uh, I am a strong advocate for affordable housing in town. Um, I think that where and exactly how it's built is going to be an ongoing conversation for for a number of years. Um, and I think that it's important to, for the town to be able to provide housing for our students um at the university, for our post-docs, for our public school teachers, um, for the many people who work at the businesses that we all frequent. Um, it's important to have a town that reflects economic diversity as well as racial and ethnic diversity. Um, and so in terms of the priorities, I appreciate what the plan does in clearly laying out the priorities of affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Nuka.
Okay, the next person is Kathy Knight, and then we have Karen Blue.
Yes, you raise, you swear or affirm the testimony about to give me the truth?
I do. The name's Kathy Knight, K N I G H T.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I live on Master, uh, Nassau Street, and um I want to say that reading the master plan, it seems to document an exponential increase in the density of our town. I'm a big fan of additional housing and certainly affordable units, but I don't think this plan is well-crafted to achieve the additional density and expanded housing opportunities for the missing middle without severely affecting what makes Princeton such a special place. I don't believe the land use portion of the document is setting goals that reflect the desires of the community at large. Certainly, these changes were not supported in the listening sessions I attended. Most of the land use goals are to increase density, which will help developers. There is no mention of historic preservation in the land use goals. Greenway Neighborhood encompasses the outer ring around the central core. This is a proposed new development uh, for the proposed new zoning. It is shown to allow one to two dwelling units per acre. Many of these lots are two-acre lots, which will now allow four dwelling units per lot. The Neighborhood Zone proposes two to three dwelling units per acre. This includes Hodge Road, Institute, Neighborhood, Riverside, Littlebrook areas. In this zone, a home on Hodge or Cleveland in a typical one-point-two-five-acre lot could have as many as ten units on it. The Central Neighborhood Zone, which is where I live, allows for four to twenty dwelling units per acre. This includes the entire residential center of town, Moore Street, the Tree Street, Jackson, Witherspoon, Jug Town, and extends past the shopping center. Um, my lot alone is on one-point-eight-five acres, and I could have three dwelling units. And there's a couple of of ones in my neighborhood, point-eight-five-acre lots that could have seventeen units on them. So I know that this is only a guide, and this is not legislative yet, but as a guide, I'm very concerned about the direction that it's going. I believe these proposed changes will incentivize developers to tear down homes and build the maximum allowable building envelope in order to sell these units as a profit. In the past, they've torn down lower-cost housing and built new, larger ones. Now they can build three or four units on a lot. Also, is there any proof that the developers will build small entry-level homes that will be affordable middle housing? And there is a concern about the effect on the property taxes. If the lot next door to you can sell four units at a million dollars each, that will increase the neighborhood land value and possibly raise taxes, potentially driving out some of our neighbors. Will these regulations encourage a homeowner to just do minor modifications to add a low-cost apartment or apartments in their existing home? I don't think so. I know the goal of the Master Plan Committee was to create a plan that calls for incremental sensitive growth within existing neighborhoods and preserving what makes Princeton such a unique place. We appreciate all your efforts, but let's delay voting on this plan um, to achieve these goals and make the plan reflect the desires of the majority of the town's population. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Knight.
Okay, uh, the next person is Karen Blue, then we have Mike Head and Anna Kors.
Okay, so we're, we're going to hear from Ms. Blue, um, but then we are, that, that'll take us right up to eight forty-five, and I think that at that point we should stop and address some of the um questions that have been raised. Um. Uh. That's, that's my take on it anyway. So um if folks strongly disagree, uh, they can say.
And then Mike Head would be first when we come back, correct?
Yes, correct. Yeah, yeah. Thank you. Um. So let's see, I interrupted, um.
Ms. Ms. Blue.
Ms. Blue, right. Ms. Blue, can you um activate your camera and unmute yourself, please? I wonder if she, oh, there we go. Good. Um, you're still on mute. There you go.
Can you see me?
Yes.
Yes. If you could raise your right hand.
Yes.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give me the truth?
I do.
So so sworn or affirmed, um, please state your full name, spell your last name.
Uh, I'm Karen Blue. The last name is B as in boy, L as in Louis, U.
Thank you.
And I live on Newland Road, near the Institute for Advanced Study. And I, uh, like many others have commented here, I would congratulate uh the people who have worked on this planning commission uh, to produce an incredible document that I certainly haven't uh perused fully enough yet. Um, but it's a major undertaking, and people have worked very hard, and I respect that. But I too have some problems with um parts of it, uh, particularly the density problem, also the historic preservation parts. Um, but let me deal first with the the density problem. Um, I think it's, it's a worthy cause, and I certainly support um affordable housing absolutely. What I would really like to see is the town to build affordable housing and avoid developers. If we want to have really affordable housing and we want to keep it affordable, we have to do what New York City did, is build our own affordable housing and make sure that it stays that way. There's no sort of twenty-five-year limit or anything like that. Uh, and the town can control and see that it stays really affordable. That is the way to do it, rather than incentivizing developers to do a little bit of uh throw us a bone in their big developments. Um, and I think there is a huge amount of housing being built in and around Princeton. If you look at Canal Point, if you look at uh Upper Two-O-Six up around um in Montgomery, if you look at our housing, uh, the proposed housing for the seminary property, uh, the housing that's going up behind the Princeton uh Shopping Center, we have huge amounts of housing that are coming in. Will they be affordable? Probably not. As someone else has said, demand here is high, and that's going to drive up the price, no matter how small, no matter how cheap, no matter how uh and well-intended all this is. So I would say too, uh, it's extraordinary to me to think of how how many houses are being proposed uh, as a possibility even for lots. And if you think about doing that, where, what happens to the trees and the bushes and the green space? What happens to impermeable surfaces? What happens to all these values that we pay lip service to in Princeton and which we try to uphold? What happens with emergency services? At the institute, the other day I was there, it took some, it took an hour to get someone who had collapsed help. Uh. That's really not great, and it's not that far uh away, and it was, it was not rush hour. There should have been no problem like that. But the schools are going to be overloaded. The, the cars, people can't give up cars. Even if we have lots of public transportation in Princeton, if everybody else around us doesn't have it, if we can't connect to other places, people still will have to have cars.
Thank you, Ms. Blue.
So I thank you very much for your attention, and I look forward to hearing uh the responses to these things. Thank you.
Let me make point. Okay, good. Thank you. Um. So. Um, Justin and maybe um um, Michael Sullivan, you, oh, I see you have uh, you activated your camera too. Um, uh, other folks can, uh, of course, uh, board members can can jump in, but what I, what I heard and think we should address, of course, is the question of of density and teardowns and um, what I believe is a misconception about how density would be achieved, but I'd like for you guys to explain that, and perhaps members of the board who um, have expertise in this area and/or were on the um uh, land use subcommittee that um wrestled with these issues can can weigh in as well. Um, I also want to um just quickly, you know, before we we break, address the questions about the urban tree canopy and the loss, you know, potential loss of trees and um, that kind of thing too. And there are a couple of other things I think we need to address, but I'll let you go, um, Justin.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, so first, on that land use map, and actually, let me just introduce, we have Michael Sullivan and Elaine Clishom, uh, the planners from Clark Gate and Hintz here. Feel free to jump in uh whenever you'd like. Um, but so that uh future land use map or land use map overall, uh, like I said earlier, this, this might sound cliche or whatever, but it's really intended to be a guide when we're creating ordinances uh later on. Um, right now, we have something like sixty-five uh zoning districts, and I think a little less than half of them, so around thirty of them, are residential ones. No one is saying to replace those with with the six or or eight on this map. Uh, but when the time comes to create those ordinances, this will be the first reference as to, you know, what should go in each of those areas based on all of the other things uh that we have in the plan, the kind of concentric development out from the center, um, the preserving the ridge, adding density where we already have uh, infrastructure and, you know, when we, where we frankly have buildings that are are similar. Um. So that's what this map is used for, and it's really based on what's on the ground today. Uh, so some of those numbers, uh, you know, if someone has a a one-acre lot or there's one-acre zoning out on the ridge, right now you could have two units on it, uh, between a house and accessory dwelling unit uh in our residential areas. So that would technically be two dwelling units per acre in that zone. So that's what we follow uh all the way up to some areas like Witherspoon, Jackson, you know, depending on if you truly go in and and put a cookie cutter of a zone, uh, one acre on it about the size of a football field, uh, sixteen units per acre and even above. Um, Bank Street is another example, the Tree Streets, uh, you know, where we're hitting, you know, twelve, fourteen, twenty units per acre. Um. But even, you know, we could focus on the numbers, and I know Michael kind of described it well last time uh, that we're talking about the form, not necessarily the numbers, because there are places, like some of the buildings on uh Spruce Street might have ten units in them if you count those mailboxes like we did last time on a one-tenth of an acre lot. That's a hundred dwelling units per acre. If you just truly put that in a vacuum, uh, same with Thirty McLean, um, the, the building that was renovated into apartments relatively recently, that's something like sixty units per acre. Uh, so again, this map is used to be the starting point with the other uh techniques and tools in the toolkit that we have in the plan. Um, and really, you know, like I said, it reflects what's on the ground. So in certain ways, it's actually, it lessens, uh, you know, saying we should have ten of. saying we should have ten of those ten-unit buildings on, uh, tenth of an acre lots or anything like that in the future.
We have, um, three board members whose hands are up, Mr. McGowan, David Cohen, Zenon Texarney. Michael Sullivan, do you want to add anything before we?
Yeah, just, just quickly, I don't, I don't want to get in the way of the board members, um, comments, but to pick up on what Justin said, the, the land use plan is a generalized guide to show relative intensities. Okay. And within that framework, as Justin has just explained, it's highly reflective of existing densities that are there today. Um, and to pick up on, uh, I believe Mr. Zinder picked up on a form-based approach to this. And that's what, what we're really advocating here is that within this framework of graduated densities that move from the core, the downtown out is that, uh, and someone asked, has this been done in other places? And the answer is yes. Um, what happens, uh, I think the woman who spoke and said, oh, there's a giant house next to me that conforms to zoning, when it probably does. That's because when zoning, uh, is created, it really creates this three-dimensional envelope, this spatial envelope within which you can, uh, build a home or a building of whatever type. And most, in, as towns evolve, there's these unspoken rules and how houses get developed and people kind of respect them until somebody comes in and says, hey, wait, we can build something much bigger than this and we can conform and they do that and they break the mold as what happened in this case. But what we've done in other places is we've looked at, uh, where, where teardowns have started to happen or things like that. And we say, well, that envelope is great, but you shouldn't be able to use the whole envelope. And what's the right form in order to fit in with the rest of the homes within a block or a district or a neighborhood? And so as the, as the zoning regulations are, um, developed, a form-based approach to this that really takes stock about how the neighborhood's already developed and how additional density may fit in there is warranted. Um, and, and so I think I answered harsh, partially two questions there or maybe I answered two questions, but that's the approach. Um, and that's really what the land use plan is, is saying.
All right. Thank you. I, I may have a follow-up question later, but somebody else might ask it first. Uh, Alvin McGowan and then David Cohen.
Hi. I, I, I have a little something different. I, I have to go. I just wanted the board to know that, yeah, I, you know, I, I, I have to go. I don't think there's going to be any voting on anything tonight.
It's, it, I, I don't think so either. We have thirteen more people who have raised their hand and I expect we'll have more than that. And, um, and we have a, a lot to discuss, so my, my expectation is that we, um, will carry this to the thirtieth.
Okay, um. Good night.
Good, good night, Alvin. I'm sorry, uh, uh, sorry you have to go.
Yeah.
But thanks for, thanks for the heads up. Thank you. Um, Mr. Cohen and then Mr. Texarney.
Yeah, I, I did serve on the, the land use subcommittee and I just wanted to, make a couple of more comments related to the density that may not have come through, uh, with, with, uh, Justin and Michael's comments. The point that I want to make is that the number of dwelling units is only one measure of density and there are others such as floor area ratio, the amount of floor area that's allowed per acre. The amount of impervious coverage that's allowed on a site. The, um, setbacks, you know, to neighboring properties on the side yards, the front yard, the rear yard setbacks. None of those are actually being proposed to be changed. Uh, in any aspect of the, I, I, I don't want to see any aspect. I think one of the commenters mentioned that there was some talk about getting rid of the minimum, um, open space requirement per dwelling unit. And that is a recommendation that's in, in the, um, in the document, so I don't want to deny that. But many, many of these controls on how density impacts a neighborhood uh, are not recommended to be changed. When we suggest having more dwelling units, uh, be allowed on an individual piece of property, we're not talking about more square footage. We're just saying instead of one great big house like that resident was complaining about went up next to her, that it might be a nice uh, seeming house that would actually have four dwelling units in it or six, you know, depending on what neighborhood it's in, uh, in a way that's appropriate to the neighborhood. So I really wanted to emphasize that, that we're not talking about increasing the amount of building when we're talking about increasing the number of dwelling units. And by the way, in answer to one of the other commenters, that's how you guarantee that developers will build smaller units that will be more affordable. And I hear the skepticism, you know, that those, uh, small units will truly be affordable. And for some people they won't. Maybe they won't be affordable for, you know, for a janitor or for a, uh, a young police officer. But at least they might be affordable for a doctor. Because right now even our doctors can't afford to live in Princeton. Um, so I think that the idea of trying to create smaller dwelling units that will be afforder, affordable to a broader range of the people that we would like to see in Princeton is really what we were shooting for uh, as we, as we tried to draft the element.
Thank you. Uh, could you say a little bit more about the recommendation to uh, eliminate the, or, or otherwise, or change the minimum open space requirement? Cause I remember I, I sort of got, I sort of tripped on that one myself when I was looking, looking at the plan and, you know, especially in, in air, in the downtown area, you know, where, where infill opportunities abound. Um, do you foresee, you know, some kind of requirement that there be access to public, public spaces or other type of open space within a certain distance or something? I'm just wondering how you're, how that was thought about.
Yeah, I, I don't remember having a discussion about that. Justin, it sounds like you want to respond.
Oh, I, yeah. I didn't mean to put you on the spot, David. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Justin.
So that recommendation, uh, includes just a list of things that can be done in the downtown area. Um, not all of those things will be done at all and not all of them will be done in each of those zones, um, that are listed in there. Um, specifically that one, uh, just reflects that if you look at the buildings that we have, uh, in our, you know, central business district, um, like Michael said, it's, it's kind of form-based. Or, or we should look at it form-based like it kind of the way that things developed. Uh, and when we add in these additional kind of requirements that you have to have, you know, a certain number of parking spaces, you have to have a certain square footage of green space. You have to have, you know, uh, whatever else. Suddenly you can't, you, you just can't build or you can't change things. Um, so that's really where that thinking comes from is, you know, if our downtown area is already built that way, we should respect that while we do these other things where we, you know, uh, improve upon our green space.
Yeah, okay. Um, Zenon Texarney?
Yeah. Hi, everyone. So, um, I, uh, also sat on the subcommittee, uh, the land use subcommittee. So I did have some say in, in, uh, how things were developed, although I, I can't say that, um, you know, everybody got their way. I think that there was some, some, uh, you know, healthy debates on these types of things. And I think that one of the things that, you know, was debated on was how, as to what extent, you know, these, you know, higher density zones, uh, should be. And, and, you know, I think that what we decided on was, was, um, a compromise, you know? Some people were, wanted to do it for the whole town. So, um, you know, I think we tried to focus on, uh, the core of the town where people can walk and bike to, to amenities. And I think that was the right decision. So, um, I, I just want to make a few comments. I, I think that, um, there is, uh, a little bit of hysteria over this. I think that this is not going to, uh, lead, uh, open the floodgates to, um, a complete, uh, redevelopment of, uh, town or complete teardowns of all, every building to, to build, uh, you know, four-unit, uh, buildings or twenty-unit buildings or whatever, you know, the, the, um, you know, um, number was for, per acre, you know, um, per lot. So I, I think that people, um, you know, should, you know, to calm down a little bit about that. I mean, uh, one thing that, uh, I should say is that the land use plan is meant to be simplified. Um, you know, it's not supposed to be super prescriptive. Um, you know, that comes much later and it's going to be an extensive process. Just, you know, almost as long as this master plan, uh, took, you know, that's gonna, you know, it's gonna take a while to develop zoning. I mean, um, you know, so I, I, I think that there's still plenty of time to, um, share people's feedback on, you know, how, uh, you know, the zoning will look in that core. Um, and, and like, uh, Michael said and others have said, I think that that zoning really should, um, you know, be, uh, um, more form-based code that can provide, um, a more prescriptive recommendations for, um, you know, what type of densities would like to happen where, uh, so you know, that's, it's going to need to be fine-tuned. And, uh, I think that also I should mention that we do have regulations in place that protect from, uh, you know, uh, the degradation of, of the natural environment. You know, we have tree ordinances, we have stormwater ordinances, we have, um, you know, zoning that will, um, you know, protect, you know, the environment and keep, um, the, the size of the buildings um, from, you know, being the, the, the full size of the lot or, you know, what, whatever people are afraid of. Um, and also I, I think that we should maybe clarify what missile, missing middle housing is. I don't think that missing middle housing is necessarily going to create middle income housing or affordable housing necessarily. Um, it's missing middle housing, housing is about a diversity, having diversity in housing types. And, um, you know, I think that, uh, people who think that this is going to, you know, create affordable housing, you know, by, you know, making, uh, you know, smaller units. Uh, you, you know, that, that, I don't know if that's necessarily going to, to happen. I mean, I, I, as we know, that there's a, there's a very strong market here in Princeton for housing. Um, you know, homes, even smaller homes go for, for quite a lot of money. Um, but I, I think that, you know, you, what, you, you might not have a, you know, a million dollar home, single-family home. You might have, uh, you know, uh, two, two five hundred thousand dollar, um, homes, which, you know, will have smaller units. And actually I know that, you know, you know, the planning board shouldn't be talking about, you know, school, schools and, and enrollment and students, but you know, smaller homes produce less students. So, um, you know, just for those people that are afraid of, you know, the schools being overwhelmed, um, you know, who knows how things are going to play out, but I mean, one, that logic would, would suggest that actually having smaller units would actually be, uh, less of a contribution to the schools. So. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Zenon. Uh, David Cohen and then Tim Quinn.
Yeah. So I raised my hand twice because I also had a comment I wanted to make about historic preservation and a question that I wanted to ask. And the question is relating to those two, uh, archaeological sites on Cherry Valley Road. You know, I'm, I'm certainly aware of the historic value of them. It sounded like from the description that was given by the, the gentleman who was, uh, on the board of the Reedview Conservancy that both of these sites have been conserved, one's been purchased and one has conservation easement on it. So I think from the standpoint of the subcommittee that worked on historic preservation, we were trying to really identify sites that need protection uh, for inclusion in this historic preservation element of the master plan. And it sounds like those two don't need it. The question is, is there someone, somewhere else that they can appear in the master plan? Justin, I think you mentioned that the public facilities element has a historic element or historic locations as a subset. You know, those historic, um, resources may not be slated for, uh, designation as a historic district for that kind of protection. But that might be a place where you could list sites like that and it's a question for you as to whether or not that would be appropriate. And then, uh, just one more thing about historic preservation. I know that the historic preservation subcommittee really wanted feedback from HPC. You know, we took a stab at trying to identify some of the highest value historic districts and the ones that were most at risk. When we, when the subcommittee put together that list and we took off some of the districts that were in there previously because when you have fifty or sixty, I think that was the number that was actually requested by HPC. You know, it's like sixty, sixty-plus, uh, historic districts. When you have that many recommended districts, the end result is you don't get any actual historic districts because it's too much to, it, the, you know, too much to try and to actually work on because it's a, it's a lengthy process and a difficult process to actually designate a historic district. And so we were trying to narrow it down, choose the most important ones and hopefully actually get them done. But I think, at least I personally, you know, would it, would be very open to hearing from HPC if one of the, you know, one of the districts we put in, they don't see as high value and they want to add a different one instead, something like that.
Good. Thank you. Yeah, that feedback would be helpful. Mr. Quinn and then Ms. Capazoli.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I, I have my eye on the clock. I know that, uh, we'll be breaking soon. And I wanted Justin to be able to address some things that were, um, that, that were raised by, by members of the public. First, I think it would be beneficial if, uh, Michael or Justin uh, gave a sort of layman's term definition of form-based code since, uh, we've, we've used that and it's a bit of a jargon-y thing that, uh, planning board types know, but is not a term that's familiar to the public. So that would be the first thing you guys can decide who addresses that. I also heard, uh, from someone who compared the, the delay in updating the master plan the ninety-six master plan, how long will we have to live with this plan? And I know that the board has, um, has accepted in concept an idea of more frequent, um, reevaluations of the updates to the master plan and, and not being on a tenure cycle the way we had been. Uh, and so I think we should address that. And then the other issue is about schools. First, the, the school sighting and school enrollment piece. Uh, and I also, um, do have, uh, some concern that was raised about the, there's no time, there's no perfect time to have an event of any kind in Princeton because there are always competing events. But I do want to be sensitive to the fact that this is a school holiday and, um, I don't know that based on the number of hands that are up and the fact that we have our break that's overdue, that, um, we allow for school parents to understand the relationship of the community facilities, uh, element to, uh, any school plans and allow them an opportunity to have their voices heard. So form-based code, how long we live with this and, um, school questions. Go.
Sure. Uh, I could start and I actually, I'll address David's, uh, question as well, um, about putting those sites in the community facilities element with the other historic sites. Uh, the historic sites in that element are designated national historic sites, uh, so I don't know if we would want to put them there. It probably would make. Uh, so I don't know if we would want to put them there. It probably would make more sense to put them by proposed local uh sites and districts. Um, that being said, you do bring up a good argument about, you know, what exactly might that do? Um, especially when the other recommendations within the historic preservation element are to update surveys, um, have these new lists, have all these other things.
Uh-oh, frozen.
Justin, you're suffering from uh inefficient broadband in the municipal building. So
Yeah, yeah, we we lost you for maybe ten seconds.
Okay, I hope we paid our bills. Um, uh, so I'm not sure where where you lost me there, but you know, I I said that the community facilities element sites are historic or uh designated designated national uh sites. Uh, so it'd probably make more sense in the proposed uh sites and districts. But then again, David's argument, you know, makes sense about what exactly would that do. Um, and then I was just saying that the the element does recommend um additional studies, additional sites, um, uh additional investigations of sites. Uh, so perhaps it could go, you know, in a place like that, um, rather than just keeping, you know, our historic kind of in investigations or 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 knowledge in the master plan element, which as was pointed out, you know, we've only updated twice in the past twenty-seven years, you know, bringing it to other places as well. Uh, so I hope that makes sense.
Yeah, and I think what we can do with this and and maybe also with the specific recommendations that Wendy Mager had is a- ask you to um, you know, study these things and come back to us when we reconvene on the thirtieth because we're not gonna finish tonight. Um, and um, with with recommendations about, for example, where are those two site? You know, what what list should they be on? How should they be addressed? I think everybody is sensitive to the importance of these two sites and the underrepresentation, as was pointed out, of Native American and um African-American historic sites. Um, anyway, so uh uh, there were other things Tim Quinn mentioned, the schools and the you're on mute, Tim.
Sorry, form-based code definition, uh
Right.
How long we are living with this plan? Um, how frequently will there, will it be reexamined? And school questions that were raised.
Sure. So I'll start with how long we're gonna live with it and I'll give the other two to Michael. Um, so as has been pointed out, our our current master plan uh has been updated twenty-nine times in twenty-seven years. Um, I don't think that's the way municipalities like like ours uh that want to incorporate planning, you know, all the time, uh, you know, con- constantly uh in constant reevaluation and data gathering and analysis. I don't think that's the way we want to move forward. And I know that's not the way I want.
Oh dear. Not again. Can someone get a hotspot to the municipal building so that?
Okay, Justin, we lost you at uh
That's not the way we want to go.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
So I'll I'll try, I'll try to be quicker then. Um, what we've seen in other towns, uh, the town of Maristown, for example, had a plan rewrite in twenty-fourteen, then looked at all the elements again in twenty-eighteen and then again in twenty-twenty-two. Um, Asbury Park did something similar to that, but in a ten-year uh span. But uh again, the the priority is to look at everything at once and do that routinely rather than kind of piecemeal things uh as we did now.
Thank you. Michael?
So I guess I get the form-based code question. So form-based code is another way. Traditional zoning, you just look at land use, right? And it was very use-based. So form-based code means that you're you're really regulating um the physical relationship of buildings to the public realm and to each other. Um, and the and the forms uh of those to get a predictable outcome uh and not leaving as much up to the individual to decide. Um, for instance, if you're in a neighborhood and there's a series of uh all the beautiful uh homes have porches and they're set back, you know, fifteen feet from the right of way, then they have detached garages in the back. You don't want someone coming in and putting like a giant box with the double driveway and a and a and a and a garage door up front. So you regulate it so that it's, you have that predictable outcome in form. And whether that's residential or commercial, you can also, within the framework of an urban design plan, identify where architectural emphasis may happen uh where um access can happen in terms of driveways or parking access in a way that makes uh uh works with your street hierarchy better. Um, so it's it's really more of a shift towards what the built environment is gonna look like at the end and feel like spatially with a less of an emphasis on land use. Now, in a residential neighborhood, it's it's residential land use, so we know that. And then you're looking at um, the the placement, scale, location and relationships of the building to each other and to the public realm. That's, that's the nutshell. Um, and in most towns, there's no real pure form-based code because you have to have, I mean, at least in our world, we've never done a purely form-based code. It's always got some use aspect to it.
Thank you.
Is there another thing, Mr. Quinn?
The schools, um, what our relationship was in um, in determining school recommendations based on data and um what that process was like. I think some general um comment about the school data that was analyzed and um how those recommendations came about.
Sure. So like I said earlier, we met with the Long Range Facilities uh Committee of the School Board. Uh, we had a member of the school board on our uh Master Plan Steering Committee as well. Um, but I I think the general concern is that, you know, this plan's gonna overload the schools uh if they've already reached their tipping point or will. Um, and we are not proposing for any major changes all at once, that suddenly there's gonna be X, you know, hundred number of students in, you know, X grade or even K to five, all going to a place at once. Um, this is really incremental growth that would be spread out throughout the town. Um, and frankly, in some ways, we didn't plan for so long a- and that's why we're seeing some of these larger buildings in in specific areas come up. Um, we do include in the community facilities uh element uh the best information that we have from the school board, uh, kind of updating where we're at um as of, you know, late twenty-twenty-three. And there are recommendations to work with the school board to create criteria for where additional schools can go as well as to uh improve upon and and increase uh, you know, the the utilization of the schools that already exist. I'm sure we all saw uh that the ballot measure passed the other day and the school board has been doing this uh with some of their other properties as well uh over the past couple of years.
Okay. Julie Capazoli?
Thank you. I'll be brief. I just wanted to give credit to our HPC Subcommittee for an excellent job of assessing historic properties throughout the town. And um, we gladly cooperate and collaborate with um Justin and crew to maybe um, look at those guidelines. Good, look at the priorities and see uh perhaps the architectural survey may take a top spot in our first focus for um HPC uh look into the, in the future. But anyway, we're happy to collaborate and work on that and report at the thirtieth um, meeting.
Great, meet um, uh collaborate between now and then so that Justin can 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 report out on the thirtieth, right?
Exactly.
Okay, maybe that's what you said and that's just wasn't what I was hearing. Um, Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Is that all, Julie? I don't mean to
No, that's enough.
Yeah, great. Owen?
Thank you. Uh, I think this one can be a a fairly easy answer for Justin. Uh, one of the commentators made a suggestion about eliminating developers when creating new housing and having the municipality uh take control. Can you address that issue?
Sure. Well, uh, so we're not really talking about affordable housing or the affordable housing settlement much tonight. Um, we're not replacing that element from twenty-twenty that we're still working through on the third round of affordable housing. Uh, when the fourth round comes around, we'll discuss those strategies. Um, but to not dodge the question, I I think that ends up, you know, that that's certainly one tool. If that was the only tool, that I think that would cost a lot of money.
A very, very, very lot of
Exactly. And if uh taxes are high now.
Thank you. Um, so um it's nine twenty-two. I'd like to take, uh, I see your finger up, Mr. Lesko.
Yeah, I I was just, I was hopeful I could just cover like two more quick ones.
Yes, yes, please.
Uh, someone, uh, sorry, someone mentioned um, uh, something about the institute director's house uh being shown as assisted living in one of the appendices. Uh, though the if you see anything in the appendices, those are reports from some of the open houses we had. Those aren't content. Those are just kind of the activities that happened there. Uh, so that's not a recommendation by any means. And then someone mentioned the term, they they weren't familiar with the term upzoning. Um, that's really when you incrementally uh, you know, change zoning from, if you allow two houses now, then you allow four. You allow one now, you then allow two. Um, a- and my point was through this plan, we're not saying do any of that across the board as you know, some other cities or even full states have.
Yeah, and to repeat something you said earlier, um, this plan does not change zoning. Okay, so um let's uh, let's take a break. Let's reconvene at nine thirty-five. So that's actually twelve minutes. Um, and uh, and then what I'd like to do is take a public comment. I'll I'll let folks know. Um, there are a hundred and thirty-seven attendees um uh hanging in there and fourteen hands are raised. Uh, at least one of those is from somebody who's already spoken, so maybe um uh, she just forgot to lower her hand. But um, uh, but we will have, you know, plenty more. Uh, we'll have public comment. What I'm gonna suggest is that we hear public comment until ten thirty and then take that last half hour to address uh additional issues that have been raised in the public comment. Have a discussion and then um carry uh things to the twentieth. So we'll, we won't close the public comment tonight. We'll pause or suspend or carry or whatever is the appropriate word. Um, but I, but I, my plan is to stop it, uh, conclude with public comment at at ten thirty.
Just to cle- clarify, Madam Chair, I think you said the twentieth and we're
Oh, thirtieth. Did I say the twentieth? Sorry.
I think you did, but it's
Uh, thank you for seeking clarification.
Not, not mansplaining.
No, um, just helping. Uh, it's okay, nine thirty-five. See you back promptly at nine thirty-five. Thanks, everybody.
Well, we'll just wait for Ms. Sacks.
So there are fourteen uh folks with their hands up right now. Um, and um
One is including Ms. Blue and I'll be taking her hand down, so.
Okay, uh, okay, so I'll just say again, um, if you wish to speak um and have not already spoken, uh, now is the time to raise your hand and we'll take folks in the order in which hands were raised. Um, so there was a gentleman who was
Mike Head, but he is not, no longer interested.
Okay.
Put his hand down.
Okay, okay. So we have up Carrie.
Yeah, I'm I'm just going back to review my notes. I'm sorry.
Carrie, are you sure about that? It looks
Here's Mr. Head. So, Mr. Head, if you could activate your camera and then Carrie, I thi- well, just so the public knows, um, fifteen folks. After Mr. Head, we'll hear from Joe Butler, Michael Floyd, and then um, Michael Bell and Jane McCarty.
Thank you.
If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm a testimony about to give me the truth?
I do.
Just want to affirm. Could you please say and spell your last name?
Mike Head, H E A D, Hibbin Road.
Thank you. Go right ahead.
Okay, I'll do my best um to build in the comments we've just had. Um, David, Justin and Zenon have all made very reassuring comments. Uh, which is great, but the detail in this plan is contradictory to what they're saying. Um, my understanding is that this is a reference document. What's in here will appear or will influence zoning. We cannot operate on a trust us on this subject. These issues um and these differences should be resolved before this plan's adopted. An example, slide forty-seven proposes removal of high open space gross floor area restrictions. It shows that historic dis- building on Edghill has been multifamily housing. It's in a historic district. Um, i- i- in commentary, we've been told that the idea is really for h- homes not to be demolished, but for an additional home to be added. Um, that has not really been confirmed by what's being said. Um, it's also stated that this is targeted zoning. Well, if you call the whole of Princeton, Princeton, and then you say, well, we've just targeted this small area. But the area that is targeted is the whole borough, um Riverside and the Institute area. Most people think that's Princeton. And it's all been um zoned or on the map it shows as two to eight units per acre, which is substantially denser than what we have today. Um, it's true that house prices and high taxes deter buyers in Princeton. But despite this, the demand exceeds supply. Many people have made that reference. I I feel the missing middle is a little bit confusing. And even for those that have tried to research it and understand it, it sounds like it's really addressing affordability, which as Zenon pointed out, is not. All it's doing is saying we're gonna have more density and we're gonna achieve that through different stu- types of houses. And I think once people understand that, they'll, they'll understand what's going to happen because we know at the moment, developers aggressively outbid individuals for smaller homes. Then they demolish them and replace them with new four-bedroom homes or five-bedroom homes. And these homes, in your own documents, they now represent forty-one percent of all units in Princeton. Up twelve percent in the past ten years. Also, multifamily housing has contributed to large rent increases across Princeton. Rents are up forty-six percent in two years. And when one
I'd ask you to wrap it up, please.
All right, okay. Um, I I just feel that w- we have a situation with this uh plan which is, really needs more discussion, more consideration, and the public needs to be involved in adopting whatever is uh in the final plan. But right now, it's not, it's not ready for prime time.
Thank you.
Okay, the next, next person to speak is Joe Butler.
Welcome, Joe Butler.
Hi. Joe Butler, raising my right hand, swearing.
Swear or affirm that the testimony about to give me the truth.
Yes.
Right, thank you.
Joe Butler, Hibbin Road. I want to echo what my um across-the-street neighbor said. Um, and I I just want to say, it's it's condescending to tell people to calm down when you drop a two-hundred-and-seventy-page document or whatever it is and you give them ten days to look at it. Um, so I just want to say that upfront, I do appreciate the great amount of work that went into this document. And I'm sorry I have to rush to shortcomings, but we're time constrained. I feel like this meeting is something less than democratic. We can't see who's in attendance and we have no way of connecting with people. None of us have the ability to read the room, including the planners. I've heard from a number of speakers I wish I could have applauded as the former to uh liaison to Historic Preservation. I'm appalled at the lack of their participation in this process. Early on, I confirmed that no one on the steering committee was from the Johnson Park School District. Um, this area includes other educational institutions of PDS, Stewart, Hunn, Princeton Academy, Prisms, Princeton Friend School. Nassau Nursery and just beyond our borders, we have Chapin, Princeton Junior School and the Montessori School. It's also home to the Institute for Advanced Study, the Seminary, the Battlefield, Princeton. Mercer Hill Historic District and Einstein's Home. Um, I just feel overlooking this gigantic geographic area and not having representation um is a mistake. If this were nineteen, uh, if this were twenty thirteen and we were coming out of the recession, I would understand the extreme focus on economic development. Um, but our CBD is largely thriving and I encourage you to try to find a parking spot on any given Saturday. What I heard businesses say at the listening meeting was that they need better parking, better traffic flow. And their customers from the north to return to town. I don't see any accommodations or encouragement for former township residents to shop in town. I think the plan also overlooks some critical events we know are going to happen. Princeton University is going to open a world-class art museum that will draw lots of visitors to town. Um, this may be all the things that the art center was not. Montgomery is going to build a very large, seemingly upscale shop shopping area just north of Princeton on two oh six. We largely ignore our neighbors in this plan, but the shopping center could have major implications for vehicular traffic in Princeton. We have, we, we do have a little bit of a moat around Princeton and I guess we're trying to build an Emerald Necklace. But we can't pull up a drawbridge. We will have a hotel that will open right in the heart of the busiest non-section and non-intersection in town at Nassau University Place. Mercer and two oh six. I don't see it mentioned. We have a three-hundred-seat brew pub that will open shortly right in the center of town. We have five to six hundred luxury apartments under construction that are not filled. We have misunderstood the number of school-aged children this will create and we seemingly have no plans. To substantially add classroom-capacity playing fields. And instead, we keep making acres unavailable for any development at all, even active recreation. We have an infrastructure issue. I would say we are creating environmental injustice. Um, we cannot create more density in town, no matter how gentle the infill and not destroy our critical tree canopy. I feel like it's wishful thinking to um to presume that the motorized vehicles will not be around. I think scooters are. Not going to go away and we ignore them at our peril. I think we need clarity for the next meeting around the definitions of affordable housing that will meet COA, not just be affordable in some monetary sense. We need to be clear about what the missing middle is as a form or whether it's an income level. I wish we'd have clarity around what is actually walkable. What gentle infill is as opposed to actual just regular infill. I, I've.
I need to ask you to.
I know, I've got a couple of questions. Economic development element, if there's another town with one, I'd like to know. I'd like to know if whether the tax assessor was consulted because I think we're going to see a huge shift in the tax burden. And um, are planning board texts that take place during meetings part of the public record? Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Michael Floyd, then we have Michael Bell and Jane McCarty.
Okay. He's ready, Mr. Mueller.
Raise your right hand.
It's raised.
You swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes, I do. Michael Floyd Harris Road. Um, first start with a couple little points or quick points. There's a reference in the report that the black population of Princeton went up eighteen percent. Between two thousand and ten and two thousand and twenty-one. I believe that is incorrect and actually the census data uses only one municipality in two thousand and ten when there was two. It shows that the town jumped from twelve thousand three hundred and seven to two thousand twenty, thirty thousand. Six hundred and seventy-five. And if they base, and we all know the black population didn't increase sixteen percent. So I think that's incorrect. I do have a question regarding schoolchildren. You cite uh the Rutter Study. And I was wondering if the school system agrees with that ratio in there. I read that study a couple of years ago. If the school agrees with it, fine. If not, I suggest you take that out or use a range. Um, I actually don't think that number, I think there's a methodology flaw that Listigan used. Um, onward, I appreciate uh David's explanation or clarification related to zoning and. The districts and hopefully to calm people down. Um, because I was very confused about it. Um, on the tape of Michael Sullivan from last month talked about maintaining. You know, community character and, and such, and I was trying to understand. What zoning rules you may anticipate going away, which would be stay, stay. And how you can maintain character if we were going to do, you know, as many changes that were implied to the zone. Now that David's explained it, and I can believe it had a lot of conversation. I shake my head on now what he said, um, that the conclusion of the committee is. Uh, for me, it's, and you take a dense neighborhood like John Witherspoon or the Tree Streets. You know, they're, they're like one of three people that has a knapsack that had sixty pounds in it. And two other people have twenty and ten. And you got ten more pounds or twenty more pounds to distribute. They're going in the same direction and you put it in. The one with sixty. The town's been involved with exclusionary zoning forever. John Witherspoon and the Tree Streets weren't responsible for that. It's the other zones. So I'm just amazed that you did come out the majority to say, no. Put the density where it's already over dense. And the lots weren't really developed in a really sensible way, a lot of them, and they're varied. Also, I appreciate the clarification on missing middle and that we're now only talking about building types. And I appreciate what Mr. uh Texardi said. You're not getting affordability in missing middle. You can get the building types and other people have said it too, so. I support this exercise, but. You're not going to get affordability, but you're getting building types. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have Michael Bell and Jane McCarty. And then we have Molly Shepherd and then Christine Lewandowski.
Well, good evening. Yes.
Yes. You swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give me the truth?
Yes, we do. I do.
Yes.
We do.
Okay.
My name is Michael Bell, B E L L. And my wife is Jane McCarty, M C C A R T Y. We live in the Kyler Road neighborhood. First of all, I'd like to thank the board and its consultants and committees for the preparation of this plan. And the involvement of the community in that formulation. Um, I was a little disappointed that the second information session that was held was definitely informative. And not for input from the community at that point. Um, I'm speaking to the um land use aspects of the plan. The data presented by Mr. Lasko shows that Princeton is far from affordable. There's a huge disparity between the income and housing prices. Princeton is expensive because people consider it a desirable place to live. Mr. Randall made the point about the difficulty of building any affordable housing here. A free housing market will encourage and allows and indeed encourages prices to rise until there are simply too few buyers. But if you look at real estate sales, you'll see the number of cash buyers here indicates that people are very willing to pay in Princeton. Without subsidy, housing here will always be unaffordable unless you decrease its attractiveness by making the town less attractive. For example, by building high-density housing everywhere. Developers by themselves will always build the housing that maximizes their profit. They only build affordable units by building a far greater number of market rate units which subsidize the others. And so you have to build vast numbers of houses to build affordable housing. I just don't believe that there is a solution to this problem which does not involve subsidy. Or municipal housing of some kind. We cannot leave it to the free market to develop this. And um, there are subsidies which occur already to builders in the form of enormous tax breaks for them for development. But we actually end up with very few affordable houses as a result, a much greater number of market rate units. Those are the, the points that I want to make. I just think it's going to be a very difficult question to solve this in a way which preserves this town. As a desirable place to live. Thank you.
I'd like to add that the issue of adding density to places that are already have high density. Does not seem very fair to me in the overall scheme of how the town should develop.
Thank you both very much. And I, I really do appreciate your expressing your views. Um, in less than three minutes and I, I. I want to assure the board and, and others, I, I know I let a couple of folks go. Substantially past three minutes and that's not fair to people who do express their views in the time that we provide, so. Um, let's, let's. A note to the speakers we have upcoming, um, please do not exceed three minutes, um, because it really puts. The board in a difficult spot and I don't want to be cutting people off, but I will be. Okay. Um, thank you again, Mr. Bell and Ms. McCarty. We appreciate your views. Okay, Ms. Shepherd, can you um activate your camera and unmute yourself? There you go. Great.
Yep.
Go ahead, Mr. Mueller.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give me the truth?
I do.
Just want to affirm, please state your full name and spell your last name.
Uh, Mary Shepherd, S H E P P A R D.
Mary is the first name?
Yeah, formal.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. Um, my, my name is Molly Shepherd. I live on Ober Road. Um, and I appreciate all the um concerns mentioned by the people um. Ahead of me and I echo their concerns uh specifically around the character of the town and how I feel that this plan. Does not take that into accountability in terms of ensuring that that would be preserved. I think the idea that this is. Guidelines that will be used. That, you know, going forward is not, it's not explicit enough about the protections of the character of the town. Uh, specifically though, um, you know, it's extensive in its discussion of the effects of climate change. And weather events, et cetera, but, and yet I feel like the. Um, the land, the land use piece doesn't account for the fact that we already have flooding issues in a lot of neighborhoods in Princeton. Particularly in homes in Princeton. And even though, um, you know, part of it is saying you're not going to increase the permeability, there is. Some gray area in that, in the wording of it about uh permeability. And any change in that at all will really increase our um, our flooding in our neighborhoods, our flooding in our homes. These are older homes. And the idea also is that not every home in these older neighborhoods maximizes their square footage allotage. And, and the idea that a developer or anyone else wouldn't maximize every square foot. Is, is sort of, I think is very naive. And then that would really affect the flooding in neighborhoods and in homes. Uh, we're, it's a really, um, it's already an issue with our major storm events that we've been having over the past ten years. And I think it needs to be a consideration as much as the trees is how much are we thinking about? The, uh, you know, the infrastructure and the ability of, um, you know, in terms of flooding. I think that that's a major issue. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the next person to speak is Christine, but she has her hand raised and I'm not sure why.
Christine. Yeah, uh, uh, can you activate your camera and unmute yourself?
Uh, I don't know why you don't have my screen, uh. All right, hold on.
So you've turned your camera on. There you are. Let Mr. Mueller swear you in and that.
If you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give me the truth?
Yes, I do. Um, I'm Chris. And I'm a professional planner with over thirty years. Uh, experience PP and AICP. And Historic Preservation Planning. I'm a member of the Historic Preservation Commission. The HPC's Master Plan Subcommittee. And for twenty-six years, I was your Historic Preservation Officer for the Township. And the Consolidated Municipality. Um, I want to say that there is a fair amount of mistakes and errata throughout the plan and we will be giving you a list of that in writing. I do want to say that the two maps and the historic preservation element have a lot of omissions. Or irregular or not, it seemed, they seem like some of the boundaries are not correct, but the National Register. And the um, National Register map shows eleven sites. And if you go to the uh state website, there are forty-five sites. And um, the, some of the major uh omissions was Mountain Lakes, the Princeton Ice Company. Tusculum and Arlington Road, which are, are local, except for the Ice Company, but they're also on the National Register. And the, the um, Mountain Lakes is owned by the municipality. It's on the National Register. And any improvement there is under the jurisdiction of the Shippo Office, the State Historic Preservation Office. And the state for federal permits which they administer. So there, there will be no um reason to ever make it a local district because that will never change. And the HVC will always be advisory and will have no uh jurisdiction. Um, these maps and errata, errata should be corrected. I want to echo Roger Shatskin's uh, uh, thoughts on um. The master plan and we want to meet with you because we did provide you a number of sites. We do not um think that Mountain Avenue, the Graduate College, Rose Deer Road. And the Princeton Ice Company are priorities. The plan also suggests the elimination of the buffer zones. Uh, we found that the buffer zones, a whole section of the ordinance was not. Um, did not get into the two thousand and fourteen ordinance that was adopted. Um, this should be corrected and we have had recent conversations with the Shippo Office. To um, about the ordinance and the buffer zones and the CLG uh. Guidelines and, and um acceptance by the, by the state for the CLG. Status and uh I refer to Ms. Kim who's had those discussions if you. Need detail, but we absolutely believe that the buffer zones should stay on the map. They should be in the map in the plan because they are still designated. And we do, we do not believe that they should be de-designated. I want to say on page one ninety-two.
Sorry, Ms. Lewandowski.
African-American uh community. That's why I want to make this one, like three more sentences. There is a picture of the African-American community. It's a photo. And that community was demolished by Edgar Palmer to make Palmer Square. We do not understand why that is on the, on the introduction page. There, there is no um title. It is not labeled. We don't understand why that is there. It should be labeled in all photos.
Thank you. Thank you. And if there are errors um. Uh, in the document, they will be corrected, so we look forward to your uh list. Who's next?
Uh, Emily Eschott and then an iPhone.
Ms. Eschott, if you could um activate your camera and unmute yourself, please? Ms. Eschott, are you there, Emily Eschott? Might have had to step away. Carrie, perhaps you can bring over.
Okay, the iPhone person has declined. Okay, the iPhone person has declined, so I'm going to Brian McDonald now.
Okay. So Jerry, Brian McDonald has his hand raised and he's ready to be sworn in.
Okay, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give be the truth?
I do. Brian McDonald, M C D O N A L D, Journeys and Lane. Good evening, Chairman Wilson, Vice Chairman Quinn, and members of the Planning Board. I'm a member of the Board of Education, but I'm speaking as an individual and not on behalf of the Board tonight. I was happy to serve as a member of the Steering Committee and two subcommittees and commend the Planning Board, Justin Lusko, and the professionals at Clark Caton Hints for running a very thorough process that has had numerous opportunities for substantive public engagement. I'm also grateful for the recognition during the process that strong public schools are critically important to our town. I just wish that the state-guided format for the master plan allowed for more discussion about the importance of the public schools to the overall health of the community now and as we look to a future that will include increased density, population growth, and higher public school enrollments. Having said that, my point is a minor one, and I very politely request one small edit to the proposed plan. On page 141, number 5.7, there is a sentence that reads, "It has been almost a half century since a new school was constructed in Princeton." The last school was built in the 1960s, so almost should be changed to more than. And again, I'm grateful for the focus on the public schools and just wish the plan allowed for further exposition on why they're so important to our community. Thank you all again for your hard work.
Thank you, Brian McDonald, for your comments and for your hard work.
The next person to speak is Wasim Abida. And then Clifford Zink.
Welcome, Mr. Abida. Mr. Muller, can you swear him in, please?
Yes, could you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give be the truth?
I do.
So swan or affirm, please state your full name and spell your last name.
My name is Wasim Abida. A B I D A is my last name. I reside on Ober Road in the Institute area. So thank you, thank you to the board and to all those who are speaking up today. I do want to voice that I have serious concern about the land use aspect of the draft master plan that has not been addressed by the plan documents or by any responses from board members today. The stated goal is to create this middle housing, which board members have variably called more affordable housing or more diversity in housing. Whatever middle housing is, the board suggests that this will happen organically with overall preservation of the historic character of the town and its neighborhoods. The board insists that they are not mandating increased construction, but at the same time, it's clear that there will be no oversight over this process, and if instituted, development will be subject to market forces. These market forces are obvious in a plain sight. There is more profit to be made from multiple dwelling units than a single dwelling within a certain area and an incentive to maximize building anywhere within a lot. Individual home buyers, even those who tear down and plan to rebuild, don't necessarily think along those lines since they're building living space for themselves and not to maximize profit from the sale. So, for example, a newly constructed single home on one acre in the Riverside area typically listed for about $2.5 million. Four luxury dwelling units on one acre will realistically list for 1.2 and probably honestly $1.5 million each. I think these are realistic numbers for anybody who spends any time looking at Zillow or Redfin. So it's simple math driven by this large potential profit. Developers will outbid individual buyers. Tear downs of building the multiple dwelling units will increase substantially. And as other speakers have said, Kathy Knight and Karen Blue among them, this will increase the town's population, the need for services, need for school space, and likely property taxes for neighboring homes. I heard sadly a board member earlier call this hysteria and snicker that this will not lead to mass construction, asking people to calm down. So first of all, I don't think this language is respectful to residents and taxpayers who are voicing the opinion in a public hearing. So I have to make that clear. Second, I haven't heard any convincing responses at all to these concerns of tear downs and developer-driven construction and overcrowding, other than assurances that this will be incremental, occur slowly, and that the concerns of most of the attendees today are unfounded. So I think this is a critical issue. It will impact all residents of the town. And I agree with Joe Butler that this has not seemed to me to be a democratic process. So I would urge more clarity on the plan and what its purpose is and further discussion on the issue. I don't think it's ready to pass. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, well, the next individual is Clifford Zink. Emily Eschott is back. I had called her up earlier. Is it okay if I? Thank you. So here's Mr. Zink.
And then we'll hear Ms. Eschott next.
Yes.
Okay. Hi, Mr. Zink.
Hi, thank you.
Raise your right hand. Yeah. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give be the truth?
I do.
So swan or affirm, please state your full name and spell your last name.
My name is Clifford Zink, Z I N K. I live on Aiken Avenue. I have been a resident of Princeton for 40 years, and I have a master's degree in historic preservation. I, first of all, like to thank the Planning Board, the committee, the staff for all the hard work. I know everybody has put great effort into this. The plan has many good components. We've heard about several of them tonight. But the preservation provisions are really amazingly weak, and in some places they're confusing and inaccurate. And they need some serious adjusting to balance all this anticipated new growth in order to maintain the most important aspects of Princeton's historic character. The land use goals, in the land use goals, preservation is only mentioned in Goal Three under the heading Remove Barriers to Increase Residential Density. Land Use Goal Six addresses protection of our natural resources. Preservation needs a similar land use goal, as other people have said tonight. And that goal should say something like, protect and preserve historic sites and districts to assure, to ensure that new development follows local and national preservation guidelines. To improve preservation review, the historic preservation goals on page 25 should specifically include adopting design guidelines that follow the Secretary of the Interior's standards for the treatment of historic properties, as is standard in other historic towns, but this is nowhere mentioned in the document. Current historic sites and districts on the state and national registers and locally designated districts and sites are confusingly presented. Justin said that some of it's because of the municipal land use requirements, law requirements, but that doesn't mean that they should be confusing. I had trouble figuring out what was being presented. And if I do, I can't imagine that other people could follow it. They need to be clearly and accurately presented to help the public understand them. In Section 8.5, historic resources for potential local designation needs significant review, as has been discussed by Christine and Roger Shatskin. Regarding the potential impact of new development, Section 8.6 is titled Impact of Other Elements of the Master Plan on Historic Preservation, but it does not identify a single impact. We have already seen examples of impacts on historic preservation, notably on Tulane Street and also on Jug Town. This section needs to identify the potential impact that all the proposed new development could have on historic sites. With these and other weaknesses in this document regarding preservation, I strongly recommend that the Planning Board and staff meet further with the historic preservation officer and commission, as has been recommended by other people tonight, to appropriately present preservation in this master plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Zink. Appreciate that. Ms. Eschott, welcome.
Hi, thank you. Sorry about before. I was having some.
That's all right. Mr. Muller is going to swear you in.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give be the truth?
I do.
So swan or affirm, please state your full name and spell your last name.
Emily Eschott, E S C O T T. I live on Queenston Place. We moved to Princeton due to the beauty, history, quality of schools, and overall life. I think the notion of affordable housing, while admirable and rooted in good intention, is not going to work, full stop. We bought a home in Jug Town due to the charm of this wonderful historic district. I feel as though the historic preservation aspect is being brushed aside, while, which is very concerning, as it is the fabric of Princeton. The proposed housing development in the parking lot off NASA and Harrison passed quietly during COVID, while we struggled to simply plant bushes in the front of our yard. I have a child in the public school system, and I'm very concerned about the expected growth without an actual plan for these additional students. Saying that you were speaking to the school board is simply not enough. Traffic in town is awful. The strain on 27 is already too great. Tractor trailers are too big. They can't pass in many places of town. It is simply a hazard, and having more people is nonsensical. This is a massive plan, and I do appreciate the work that went into this. We residents are not being alarmists, and please don't call us that. We are simply concerned and want to have input, clarity, and studies on this plan. 10 days to review to review this is too short and offensive. I want to applaud many of my fellow residents on being advocates for our town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I've already moved over Robert Shepherd, and then we have Tom Pinio.
Okay. Mr. Shepherd, welcome. Mr. Muller, go ahead.
If you could raise your right hand.
It's raised.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give be the truth?
I do. Thanks very much. My name is Robert Shepherd, S H E P P A R D. I live on Ober Road. As several people have started with, thank you all for the work that you put in. I know it was obviously a lot. And even though I do have many concerns, I recognize that it was a major effort. I would like to reiterate concerns around the public schools. Anything that would impact kind of flooding in our in our area, and I'm sure in other areas where they have to deal with that with the climate change. But what I would like to just talk about for a minute is I I'm I'm new to the zoning world. I have one experience. We had a meeting with the board. A neighbor did a build and form-based codes. I I'm the idea that we have a guideline that's going to be expanded, and under a past guideline, you could have something completely different than the form of a neighborhood. And I believe it was Michael Sullivan who explained it. Come out and be approved by a zoning board with five contiguous neighbors saying that they didn't want it. I I don't know with this new guideline how we're going to get anything more than just more informed developers with legal backing to basically push through anything that they can push through in order to maximize building in any of the neighborhoods that are going to allow it. So thank you again for the work that you've put in, but I I'm I'm very concerned with what this will do to Princeton. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shepherd.
Tom Pinio, and then Carolyn Yerkes.
Is Tom Pinio up?
Yes, he's just just came up on the screen, so.
Mine mine comes up late.
Yeah.
You think I'm here?
Yes, you are here. We can see you and hear you.
Yeah, if you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give be the truth?
I do.
So swan or affirm, please state your full name for the record and spell your last name.
Tom Pinio, last name, P I N N E O, live on Van Givender Avenue.
Go right ahead, Mr. Pinio.
First of all, thank you to everyone who's worked so hard on this. The outreach has been extraordinary. It's been a model of community engagement. The master plan is breathtaking in its scope and vision and lays out in excruciatingly and agonizingly painful detail the often competing interests that lie before us. It's a tall order, and we've got our work cut out for us, strapped in for compromise and balance and trade-offs. It's equal parts moonshot and balancing act. Perhaps it's a moonshot because it's a balancing act, and that's precisely what I find so powerful about this end-of-the-beginning document, as our planner has so often described, this stop on the journey. But at the intersection of a housing crisis and a climate crisis, a moonshot is what we need. And if we're going to succeed in our mission, it's going to be by building more housing in town that I believe has three main benefits. One, to make Princeton more accessible and affordable to those who want to live here but can't. Two, to make some real effort to wean ourselves from our cars and slow the spread of development in the car-dependent perimeter of town, where we should be focusing our conservation efforts. Three, to make Princeton more vibrant and induce a demand for goods and services that derails what I fear is our current course to securing our position as the gift shop and food court of central New Jersey. I also believe very strongly that we need to strengthen historic preservation. But by concentrating our efforts and polishing the gems rather than diluting our efforts, as I fear we do too often, by sprinkling historic pixie dust across too many oldish, though certainly not historic buildings. I say that as the recipient of three historic preservation awards from the Historical Society of Princeton and as a developer of a project currently underway that HPC has cited as an example of future historic redevelopment. I reject the affordability is an illusion gesture that we saw earlier. That's a cynical and frankly lazy point of view. I do, however, agree that AHO2 was not sufficiently stress-tested as it relates to the overlap with Jug Town. We should downshift and take care to get those details right and both to to hear both the voices of those who are already in Princeton and call it home, and to anticipate the voices of those who wish to. As others have said, there will be unintended consequences, but to me, those are the hows of implementation and not the whats of the vision and the policy and master planning. Look, if you don't want more density, this is not your master plan. But if we're going to successfully navigate the complex challenges ahead of us, I believe this nearly 300-page document provides us with the broad contours of what we need to know and what we need to keep top of mind to begin now the long work of implementation. I'm in full support of this plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Pinio.
The next individual is Carolyn Yerkes, and then Bridget Allsdorf.
Welcome, Ms. Yerkes. That's your left hand, though.
I'm reversed.
She's ready, Mr. Muller. It's easy to identify the lefties when you're swearing people in.
If you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give be the truth?
I do. I swear.
So swan or affirm, please state your full name and spell your last name.
My name is Carolyn Yerkes. It rhymes with turkeys, and it is spelled Y E R K E S. I, too, live on Ober Road. I have a contrasting opinion to give of the one of Mr. Pinio who just spoke. I don't agree with this plan. I have several problems with it. It's a long plan. It's certainly a thorough plan. But I think some of the most important parts of the plan were buried in it, and those are the parts about zoning. I take issue with what Mr. Texarney said about my neighbors and fellow community members who expressed a perfectly reasonable set of concerns about the zoning in this plan. And I don't agree that their concerns are hysterical. and I don't agree that their concerns are hysterical or that they should be told to calm down. If residents are reacting in a way that you don't expect them to to your plan, perhaps that's not a sign that they're reacting in the wrong way, but perhaps that's a signal that the plan hasn't been framed well. The zoning issues, I think, are really at the core because they're going to affect everything else in here. What Mr. Pinneo just said is there are certain things that always need to be kept top of mind. What I think we all need to keep in mind, very top of mind as citizens of Princeton, is our schools, whether or not we have children in them. I have two children in the public schools. Many of the people who have spoken tonight have children in the public schools. But I think that all the residents, even who don't have children in the public schools, would agree that the impact of this plan on our schools should always be top of mind. I disagree with what Mr. Texarney said, that smaller homes.
Please just confine your comments to the plan, and let's not make anything personal, okay?
Okay, well, I'm glad that he will refrain from making it personal against my community members. He said that smaller.
I don't think that that was intended at all, but go.
Smaller homes don't produce fewer students, because homes don't produce students at all. Families produce students, and families can have many children in all sizes of dwellings. So I think that all of the residents who have spoken up about the impact on the schools and what a higher density zoning would do, and I understand how many times we've been told tonight that the plan doesn't actually dictate zoning, but the plan has a direct effect on zoning and that it's a future guide for zoning. So I think it's just a matter of semantics to separate those two, and I would hope that any future question and answer periods would address that very important connection. Thank you.
Thank you, and that is something, you know, the distinction between the planning board's role and authority and and limited, if any, participation in the actual implementation, which really falls under our elected leaders. We'll definitely explore that when we start talking in about, you know, five minutes. So I think, let's take two more folks for public comment, and then by then it'll be maybe a little after 10:30, and we can spend the balance of the evening responding to some of what we've heard and discussing it and discussing what we want to hear back from staff about when we reconvene on the 30th. So Ms. Aldorf, are you? Carrie, is Ms. Aldorf next?
Yes, and then James Bash, and then that's it.
Okay. So, welcome, Mr. Muller. Ms. Aldorf's hand is raised, and she's ready to be sworn.
If you could raise your right. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay. So sworn or affirmed, please state your full name and spell your last name.
My name is Bridget Allsdorf, A.L.S.D.O.R.F., and I live on Hartley Avenue. I want to thank you all for welcoming public comment on this master plan proposal. This is a very big document, and I do think that we need to give the town time to absorb it and respond. I have several concerns about the master plan's proposal to bring more housing density into the town, including the impact of that density on the density of greenery and traffic. And I'm concerned, like many of the other people who have spoken this evening, that luxury developers, not new low- and middle-income residents or pre-existing Princeton residents, will be the ones to benefit most from this approach. I don't think we should pretend, as many others have said, that smaller, denser housing will be affordable. And I also don't think we should pretend that people who live close to the center of town aren't still going to use their cars to get around much of the time. I don't think that's a cynical point of view. I think that that's clear-eyed realism. I also don't think people are hysterical to have concerns about these issues. And one of my chief concerns, echoing Maggie Schuler and Carolyn Yerkes, who just spoke, is the impact on the public schools, which are already dealing with overcrowding. I was concerned not to see this addressed in the master plan's many pages. The document states at one point that Princeton's excellent public schools are what keeps housing in the municipality in high demand. That's on page 148, and I think this is an undeniable fact. The schools are a big part of the attraction of living in this town. But the document also states on page 39 that, quote, "Contrary to popular belief, an increase in rental or multifamily housing does not predicate a correspondingly large increase in the number of schoolchildren," end quote. And there's a URL provided there as a footnote that's meant to link to a study done in 2018 by Rutgers University. FYI, the URL does not work. You get a page not found with that URL, but the summary provided in the document essentially says that two-bedroom units don't bring in as many kids as larger houses, ergo, the increase in enrollments will likely be small. And I'd really like to see more data to back that up, because maybe if you build five two-bedroom homes, that will not bring in as many kids as building five four-bedroom homes, if you're comparing them one to one. But if you bring in 300 two-bedroom units into a town, that is still going to bring in a fair amount of kids, again, because a lot of people move here for the schools. So citing that one Rutgers study to say, "Don't worry about enrollments," I'm not convinced. And in general, it seems to me that there's a tension in the master plan proposal between the stated importance of the public schools, the public schools as a town jewel, with which I wholly agree, and a disregard for how the schools will manage if the plan is enacted. Because again, overcrowding is already a problem for our schools. It's expensive and time-consuming to address that, and this affects everyone from a tax perspective, not just those of us with kids, and I do have kids in the public schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Allsdorf. Mr. Bash? Great. So Mr. Muller, James Bash is our next speaker. He has his hand raised and is ready to be sworn.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So sworn or affirmed, please state your full name and spell your last name.
My name is James Bash, B.A.S.H. Good evening to the planning board, and thank you for holding this forum. Thank you also to Justin and his team for all the hard work and for the public listening sessions. From a housing perspective, the challenge in Princeton, in my view, as always, is teardowns. This is my major concern in how teardowns impact affordable housing, historic preservation, neighborhood character, and carbon emissions. It's been talked about a bit tonight, but what I'd really like to understand is how this new master plan will address this problem. People wonder where the missing middle has gone in our town. The answer is, it's been torn down, house by house by house, over the decades. The more affordable homes in Princeton, modest, older, or even historic homes, 100 years or older, continue to get demolished and turned into $2 million spec houses by developers. We live in a capitalist economy driven by profit motive that is inescapable. And what happens is developers with cash in hand outbid all individual buyers to win the property, only to raise it to the ground. In other words, that more affordable home is worth more dead than alive. You see this happening all the time, and it runs counter to the objective of increasing affordable housing. Some earlier commenters were questioning whether the new master plan would lead to greater incentive to do this. Someone else talked about the law of unintended consequences, and that changes to our master plan zoning should be stress-tested to determine if they would increase, or preferably decrease, the rate of teardowns in our community. Until the teardown dynamic here gets disincentivized somehow, or unless they are replaced with more modest duplexes or triplexes instead of 5,000-square-foot, single-family homes, we will continue to lose the smaller and medium-sized homes that some middle-class families can potentially afford to buy here. So the goal of increasing affordable housing is good and necessary, but much of the municipality's recent approach seems to be as rentals, which cannot build equity for people who can use it. I hope that we, as a town, can do something about the teardown epidemic, or we could just be running to stand still on the sum total of true affordable housing in our town. So my question is, how do our town's leaders anticipate that this new master plan will affect teardowns? And how can we make sure that this is proven out? Thank you.
Thank you very much. So that's a good question to start our discussion, because it is an undercurrent in a whole lot of what's been said tonight. And I see Mr. Cohen has his hand up, so I'll call on you first, David, and then perhaps Justin and Michael Sullivan can weigh in as well. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Mr. Bash for asking that question, because like you just said, Louise, I think it's the perfect springboard for a discussion of what the intention of the land use element proposals is. The intention is not to stop teardowns, because I think that those will continue, whether we change our rules or not, because those small, single-family homes are worth more dead than alive. It's an unfortunate reality of real estate in Princeton right now. So the question is, what do they get replaced with? And we're absolutely laser-focused on trying to make sure that those teardowns get replaced with smaller, more affordable alternatives than what gets built today when a teardown happens. So totally open to suggestions of how to do it even better than what we've got in the current draft. But I think that that goal was a unanimous goal of the folks who are on that land use subcommittee, and Mr. Bash really identified it as the crux of the issue. It really reflects the public input that we received during the open houses, where, you know, the most popular request was for more small, single-family homes to be built in Princeton.
And if I could add to that, many of the recommendations you see in the land use element say to study or to look into or, you know, analyze certain things. So we're not saying all of the above, do them in every area of town. We'll need to look into what's on the ground now, and maybe it does make sense to, you know, refine the ADU ordinance or, you know, add more units in those subdivided houses in certain areas, but not across the board or anything like that to, you know, essentially give homeowners options of what to do with their property. But I think the reality now is, you know, we see it all over the place. Those, the economics are just the teardown and the rebuilds of the maximum. That's the only option, and people take advantage of it, and, you know, we can't just stop it. That would be a taking of their property, so giving other options, you know, we could then frame them to reach some of these other goals that, you know, have been described today.
And if I can just jump in, you know, one of the, Mr. Bash said, "What can you do to stop teardowns?" And as you just said, it's hard to stop people from exercising their property rights, but what you can regulate, and we talked about this a little bit before, Mr. Cohen mentioned it, floor area ratio for residential areas, which is an effective tool, where you're regulating the floor area ratio so it does not max out the site. You can use the form-based coding that we talked about before to have predictable building forms and relationships between buildings in the public realm, the streets and the sidewalks, to make those fit the neighborhood. You can create maximum building sizes. You can't have minimum building sizes or housing unit sizes, but you can have maximums. So there are tools within the zoning toolkit. We're in the world of policy development here, but in the zoning toolkit, there are much more fine, fine tools that we can use within individual neighborhoods to calibrate development so that even if something is torn down, that what comes back in its place fits the neighborhood and is not something that is oppressive to its neighbors and is appropriate.
And if I could just add, many of those ranch houses were in place when the zoning was applied or was created. So really, if you think about it, those are representative of what the community's values were at that time, which was, sure, you have a small two-, three-bedroom house now, but one day you're gonna have a great big one, or at least the next person is, and we're seeing that being exercised now. So if that's still, you know, the community's value, so be it, but that's not what we're hearing here. And to not offer up any other opportunities, you know, there's no reason to think that the home values won't just continue to keep going up and all these things that we're, you know, hearing people have a problem with.
Okay, thank you. So other things that came up during this, oh, Mr. Texarney?
Yeah, I just want to address, you know, what I said earlier, you know, and apologize. I mean, I sometimes put my foot in my mouth and say things that don't come out right. I didn't mean to offend anyone, so I, and I'm sorry if I did. And, you know, I just wanted to say that, you know, I understand that people are concerned about change. You know, something like this can be scary. And, you know, I share a lot of the concerns. You know, it's kind of ironic, because I brought up a lot of the things that people were mentioning in our discussion. What I was just simply trying to say was that, you know, the future land use plan isn't going to be turned into zoning, and, you know, what is, you know, put in that plan, you know, and that density, it doesn't mean that it's going to then immediately become, that whole area is gonna become zoned for that. You know, there is going to be a process that will, you know, kind of be fine-tuning what actually is appropriate for where. And I just wanted to kind of, I hate to use the word calm, but calm people in that issue, because, you know, this isn't the be-all, end-all right now. There's still gonna be time to provide input. The other thing I wanted to mention and clarify was about missing middle housing. Like I said, missing middle housing, as a theory, is primarily about the architectural types of housing. And by creating different architectural types that provide different types of units and homes, you know, with multiple dwelling units sometimes, you will have different price points. So it's not going to create affordable, it's likely not gonna be creating affordable housing like we know, you know, as defined as affordable housing or low-income housing. It's going to create a range of different prices, which, you know, can be more affordable than, you know, a large, single-family home. And in some cases, it might actually create, like, affordable, official affordable housing if it triggers the affordable housing ordinance. And so I just wanted to clarify those points, because I think that people maybe misunderstood my comments and took it a different way. But yeah, I mean, like what was said before, you know, this will need to be fine-tuned. And, you know, there's different methods to fine-tune it in terms of, you know, getting the type of density we want and where. You know, not every neighborhood is going to have, you know, 20 units an acre. Like, that's just preposterous. So I think that, you know, we need to, you know, think about what we want in the future. I think that this land use, future land use plan provides flexibility to kind of create different ranges in different places. And also, I should mention that none of the recommendations for zoning changes, as far as I know, are proposing for, you know, crazy density in, you know, certain districts. I think that for the most part, the recommendations of the land use elements are mainly about correcting all the problems with the existing zoning ordinance. And those are the things that are gonna be immediately changed, more immediately. I mean, those will take time as well. And then, you know, what will happen in terms of, you know, future density and intensity of certain districts will, you know, happen over time. So I hope that helped.
I think so. Thank you. Mr. Quinn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. If I could offer some advice to my colleague, Mr. Texarney, that I learned from people who work with the public, and that's the quickest way to have someone not calm down, is to tell them to calm down. So I think I knew what. So I I think I knew what you meant there and I I'm I think that I not speak for members of the public, but I imagine that many of them were grateful to hear you apologize. So well done. My question is for Justin and for anyone, maybe Michael and Elaine and or anyone who is on the historic, the historic prez subcommittee. I don't know whether I'm, whether I misheard or whether I'm projecting something onto what I heard, but it sounded to me as if there people came just short of saying that the HPC was excluded from this process and had no, you know, that they weren't or that they weren't properly engaged in the process and that they saw the draft element too late. And I think it's good that they pointed out a few factual errors, but I wonder if we could just, for the benefit of of the entire board and for members of the public who are still with us, talk about that intersection between the HPC, which is, was not the, the involvement of members of the HPC in the process in terms of representation on the steering committee. Who was on the subcommittee that was involved in working with Michael and Elaine to draft the element? I think some clarity is needed there, I sense. So go.
Sure.
I I I mean, I think Justin would be, I saw Julie raise her hand, so I'd be interested in hearing your perspective too. And anyone else who was on the, on that committee because I, everyone knows that I'm, I fancy myself a amateur historian and you know, and care deeply about the the history of the town.
I'm happy to let Julie go first.
Go ahead, Julie.
All right. Thank you. All right. The subcommittee was Roger Shatskin, David Shore, Christine Lewandowski, and Elizabeth Kim was
So so that's the subcommittee of HPC.
Yes.
Not the, not the subcommittee of the steering committee that was involved in drafting the element.
Correct. And they were involved in drafting their own element. So they came to the steering committee with a 40-page document that outlined multiple properties and multiple ideas and and various, various complexities. And there was a very, very limited amount of interaction between these two committees. So I think the best thing to do is revisit that document and understand if there is a way to incorporate it as an appendix. It may springboard a, an architectural survey. Our last architectural survey was in 1981. So it's sorely overdue. So there are multiple benefits to looking at that document again. But I know that it didn't quite conform to the structure of the other elements. And so I think there needs to be some kind of working out of how this, their document and the master plan element can work together to convey the same ideas.
And so just, I just for my, for my benefit, this was, this subcommittee of HPC took it upon themselves to write a, an element. And was there some confusion as to whose responsibility the element was? Because it seems kind of an extraordinary and duplicative effort for a, for a BCC to write an element to the master plan. I'm just trying to get like all the facts straight so that we can figure out a way to move forward with, with what we, with what we have and how it might be improved upon.
Yeah, we hear about that process and I'm sorry, Julie.
So Julie was answering my question about how, how, how this subcommittee of HPC came to write their own element.
Right. So they had a lot of expertise. They had a background of putting together the consolidation of the borough and township historic preservation ordinance. And they did take it upon themselves to really write an entire element. So that ended up being a very long document, very detailed and very helpful. And so I think there just needs to be a way to find a use for that document and also to connect the main focus of that document with the element that is in the master plan.
And we can hear from Mr. Lesko, you know, about, about process, but also and also from Mr. Cohen about the thinking, you know, and prioritization and that kind of thing that shaped the the element that we, that we have. So who wants to go first? Justin, do you want to?
Thank you, Julie. That was helpful.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
I'm sorry. Thank you. Yeah.
Yep. Like Julie said, the, the subcommittee of the Historic Preservation Commission, they were always here. They were working on this document hours and hours. We really, you know, we appreciate that. There's a reference to it in the plan as a starting off point for, you know, whatever comes next, particularly if it's that Princeton Architectural Survey or, you know, whatever else. We did start meeting with them in in February of last year, and there were rounds of emails back and forth, but you know, for better or for worse, they did kind of focus on writing their own element. You know, which we, we, we knew when this was funded a couple of years ago that boards and commissions weren't going to write it. Our consultant was going to write it. So the HPC or the the subcommittee of our steering committee that was working on this element did have some direct questions based off of that. And they, you know, were not really fully answered or in such a way that they felt comfortable adding in some of these other 80 or 90 historic districts or proposed historic districts, especially knowing that the HPC uses the master plan to review properties that are in these proposed districts, you know, outside of the designated ones. The commission was really looking at what's actually in the text of the master plan of proposed districts to become new districts. And in our current plan, we've had two of the 60 or so become new districts, the Prospect Ave, one in the Witherspoon Jackson in the past, you know, 27 years. So their focus, like David said earlier, was if you throw so much in there, you know, nothing is prioritized. Maybe it allows for this proposed review. If it allows or or not. But again, prioritizing what we put in the document of these should become districts, we have a list of ones that that we, we, you know, think fit that description. And I'll let David, if he wants to go into that thinking a little more, whatever else.
Mr. Cohen and then Councilwoman Sacks.
Yeah, so you know, I don't have much to add to what Julie and Justin said about the process. I, I did serve on the historic president, the historic element subcommittee. Tim, an answer to your question. And I think the subcommittee was frustrated by the inability to get, you know, we, we got the initial recommendations, we responded with our feeling about how those should be modified and we didn't hear back. And I don't want to, you know, judge how that, how that failure to follow up came about. But what I did want to say was that in response to both, what Justin was just saying about the review of properties that are in proposed districts. One of the things that was very clearly communicated to us as a subcommittee was that proposed districts should not have clear delineation. And the reason for that is that you haven't done the study that's necessary to delineate what the boundaries are of a proposed district. So if you don't have boundaries, how can you decide what properties should get that kind of courtesy advisory review? So we got, we, I thought we got some pretty clear direction as a subcommittee that that whole concept of courtesy review of properties that are in a proposed district was kind of improper under state law. And so that's one thing that we're talking about moving away from. And the other thing was the the buffer districts that Christine Lewandowski referred to. I read through the existing language in in our historic preservation ordinance, not in the master plan, but in the ordinance. And the purpose of those buffer, buffer districts is entirely opaque. It's not, it's not, it's not comprehensible what the, what the idea was behind them or why they were even created in the first place. We also got what I thought was pretty clear direction that SHPO, the State Historic Preservation Office, was not in favor of continuing with the buffer districts and that, in fact, having those buffer districts would jeopardize the certified local agency that designation that everybody, including HPC, is very focused on getting back. It's some, it's a certification from the state that our historic preservation groups, committees, both in the borough and the township had before consolidation, what was lost at the time of consolidation. And there have been a number of corrections, I guess, to our historic preservation ordinance that were keeping us from re-obtaining that certification, and this is one of them. And so stripping out the buffer districts, that's the reason that we did that. I'm really curious to know if there have been these conversations with SHPO saying that that's not the case, you know, that you know, that these things that we were doing that were not, that we were told are not okay, that they actually are okay. It'd be interesting to find out about that. So I'm certainly happy, you know, to be involved, Justin and and Julie, if there are going to be some conversations between now and the 30th to try and sort out what's possible. I, I think those are good questions, but I just wanted to give a little bit of that inside baseball analysis about what, what went into the, the subcommittee's deliberations.
Thank you. That was helpful also, too. Sorry.
Yeah, really, really was. And I know I would like to hear from the Historic Preservation Commission whether they believe any of the priorities identified, the priority districts identified should not be priorities. You know, what, what they would switch out and make a priority if, if and I agree that having, you know, 60 is not a priority list to sew. I'm not suggesting expanding the list or tripling the size or whatever, but, you know, but to get their sense of what the priority should be. And also, you know, as Ms. Lewandowski said, they're going to send a set of corrections that, that we should check over and make, you know, make sure that there are any errors in there. Council President Sacks and then Mr. O'Donnell. And we're right up at 10:57. So I know everybody wants to wrap up on time.
I'll be very quick, Louise. I think you just answered my, my question. I, I was concerned that apart from the sort of philosophical discussion of how many districts there should be, I did hear a number of speakers, including Ms. Lewandowski, mention that there were some factual errors and I just want to make sure that as a baseline matter, we correct those factual errors, but you just, I didn't hear her say that they were going to submit those corrections. So that's great.
Yeah, she did say that. Yep.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you for that. Mr. O'Donnell.
And first on the same subject, Mr. Floyd had some questions about the growth of the black community. Yeah, we should look into that as well.
Yes, correct. That's, yep, really good point. That was on my list, too, to double check that, that those statistics that were cited, because it's important not to get that wrong.
Okay, now, my question, though, with two minutes left, I'm going to bring up the dreaded D-word. And there was a lot of comments tonight about the role of developers in this. And I don't even know if it's possible, but is there any way to control, limit, put reins on what developers do? I mean, I know, and is the master plan the place to have that?
I'm sure people will weigh in, but to me, that's like an implementation.
Yeah, that's what I thought also, and I just wanted to
And so it really would fall to
To understand.
The, the way ordinances are crafted and, and, you know, carefully enough and with the, you know, outcomes in mind. And because what I've heard from developers over the year is, look, we'll, over the years, is we'll do whatever you want. You just have to tell us exactly what you want. And, and so maybe that's an oversimplification, but but I don't think there's any, you know, icing developers out of the picture, but I'll stop talking. Go ahead, Mr. Mr. Cohen.
I was, I was just going to say, I think Jerry really should be the one to lighten us about what are the possibilities in terms of limiting the roles of developers.
I, I just want to say, like, how do we define developer? Are we talking about, you know, I mean, that's like, before we even
Could be any property owner.
What, what, what exactly are, are we, how do we define that? I would think we would need to start with that.
Yeah.
Well, and if I could just jump in, like I said before, I mean, in some ways, ultimately, the zoning that, you know, is implemented later, that is the, the, you know, those are the rules to the game for developers. In a lot of our zones, we want big, grand houses. We shouldn't be surprised when, when there are teardowns, you know what I mean? So if we could then craft zoning ordinances, you know, we've talked about putting them in houses that are already existing. But if we had one that, you know, they trade off 20% less of the floor area ratio to have two units or, or, you know, some sort of combination of things like that, you know, we can implement that way.
And the form-based zoning that, that Michael described earlier, you know, is obviously another tool to control what the what, what the developers can do, but, but the basic controls are what Justin just said. It's the it's the zoning that's eventually adopted.
All right. Is your question getting answered, Owen?
It is. Yes, it is. It is. And and my question essentially was, you know, is there anything, is the master plan the place to have that spelled out in any way? And what I'm hearing is, no, it's not.
Right, right. That's correct.
Well, I, I would argue slightly that it, it does provide the vision that comes later. You know, so we, we could go a different way and say we want exclusionary policies or, or, you know, whatever else, and then make ordinances alongside those or with those. Or we could go, you know, complete opposite apartments on, on every corner. We're not going that way either. So I think that's, that's where the master plan fits in.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. So it's 11:01. I want to thank everybody. There are still 86 members of the public tuned in and I just, you know, those who are still here, thank you very much for hanging in and for listening and and for participating in this whole process. And I'm sure we'll see some of you again, or at least read your names on the list under attendees on November 30th, which is when this hearing will be continued to and will reconvene. uh, be continued to and will reconvene. And I think that meeting has already been noticed. I will let Mr. Muller.
No, I'll be doing that tomorrow.
Oh, okay. All right. Carrie, you'll notice that.
Not tomorrow, Monday. I'm sorry.
Right. Tomorrow is a holiday, uh, for, for a lot of folks. So.
But it's already, the sunshine is all ready to go.
Okay, good. Mr. Muller, did you want to say something?
Just so that we really don't need any plan-specific notice, because this has been, because we've just continued the hearing. But what just described is the sunshine.
It, it's a special meeting night. So yeah, I have to, I have to notice for that.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Texarney, last word?
Yeah. So I, I guess, uh, it, what's going to happen is that, uh, people are going to send, you know, potential changes to the master plan document. Justin will kind of figure that out and he, he will potentially show some changes or is.
I think, I think the way we'll, thanks for that. That's a good question to end on. Um, I think the, the way we will begin the, and we've heard tonight from people who have raised questions about factual things. We want to, we want to make, uh, corrections if corrections need to be made. Um, we heard that about historic preservation, about open space, about some.
Yeah, Wendy.
Census data, et cetera. Yes. Um, and, um, what, what I, what I think we don't want to do, uh, um, and would ask that folks not do is suggest, um, is, is edit by committee. You know, I, I don't want to get into a, a spiral of, uh, editing that, um, you know, slows things to a crawl. And I don't want for us to let the perfect be the enemy of the good at the end of the day. And, um, so where we need to make corrections or important clarifications, um, I think that we should do that. And people have have brought to our attention some things and may bring, if board members have additional things to, to direct to Justin. Um, yes. And then, and at the beginning of the next meeting, I would suggest that Justin can summarize what he's received and summarize and go through the changes that he recommends the board accept. Or the, it, does that sound like a reasonable approach?
It does. But just to be clear, we're talking board members send me comments.
Yes, board members send you comments, although we, we are, um, yeah, also going to, um, get, uh, input from HPC a- as to the errors that they believe exist that we want to just go over and.
What about Wendy's, Wendy Mager's comments? Or did we cover them all in her comments?
I have notes on all of those. Uh, I'm just trying to make the point.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. You don't want to be inundated with, uh, emails from everybody who wants to make changes. Yeah, for sure. And, you know, obviously, you know, limit them to kind of more factual, kind of smaller.
Yes, because I feel like, yeah, I, and I, I don't want to invite things that end up changing the direction of the plan that is that has arisen from a, a very extensive public process. And, and, you know, and, and therefore, you know, basically mute voices we've heard, you know, say things again and again and again that weren't necessarily said tonight, um, that, uh, yeah, I, so I just want to make sure that we uphold the integrity of the process and not, and not make sort of directional changes, um, but do make important corrections and clarifications that are needed. And I hope folks are good with that.
Okay.
Chair, Chair Wilson, I also wanted to make Mr. Tenenbaum, uh, realize we are aware that he's had his hand up. Uh, we stopped public comment at 10:30 to give the board members a chance to speak. If he can come back and join us on the 30th, then he can address his concerns to the board.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, again, thank everybody who's still here for your patience and, um, and for caring about planning. That's the good news. People care. Mr. Cohen.
I would like to offer a motion to adjourn.
I'll, I'll second that.
Uh, moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you, everybody. Um, Thanksgiving is between now and our next meeting. So have a wonderful holiday.
Yep.
With your families.
You too, Madam Chair.
Thank you.